Okay, we're live.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark, Mark Loh. I am the Chair of the Select Board. I wanted to call to order this evening's meeting on Wednesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two at exactly seven P M. I'm joined by Vice Chair Adam Dash. Good evening, Adam.
Evening, Mark.
And member Roy Epstein. Good, good evening, Roy.
Evening, everybody.
Our Town Administrator, Patrice Garvin, sorry, Patrice.
Good evening.
Assistant, a new Assistant Town Administrator, Jennifer Ewitt. Good evening, Jennifer.
Good evening.
Glenn, Glenn Clancy, I'm not certain what your title is, but it's still Acting Assistant Town Administrator or Director of Community Development and all around issue, issue oriented individual for our, for our team.
Chair, become known as the person in transition.
You are the person in transition, but you've got, and you know, behalf of the Select Board, certainly want to thank you for your efforts over the past several months as the Acting Assistant Town Administrator. You know, I think all of us feel that you did great work.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And it was my pleasure. I was happy to step in and help Roy good. And we'll continue to do so, by the way. I'm happy to do it.
Well, appreciate that. We have fairly robust agenda this evening. Again, we'll have some community announcements. We're going to have a COVID nineteen update. We've got a lot of emails on that and cases have gone up. We'll talk about Diana Ekman on that matter. Excited to hear from the Energy Committee tonight. I think Marty Bennett will present and perhaps others on electrification of town fleet, hybrid participation in public meetings. We'll hear from Travis Frank, the Chair of the Structure Change Impact Group, and the work that they've done in their well over four hundred and thirty-one page of report, which is incredible. Looking forward to as well, a report by the Chair of the Premier Rate Design Committee, Mark Kelly. I don't know if Ted Galant is joining. He may be. We have some procedural matters, action by consent on contract design, design services for, for the Premier Rate Design Committee. We may continue our votes on, we're just a handful of town meeting articles. I think we haven't yet voted on. A couple of them have, there've been some clarity. Steve Piggerdin coming tonight on the MBTA Community Advisory Committee Charge, Patrice. Will he be joining us presumably?
We invited him. I, I don't know if we've gotten confirmation.
You put together the charge, so we can look at that. We have the charge for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Implementation Committee. And then some other matters. One day local licenses, Select Board Committee Liaison Reports, and we'll go into executive session in our return for open session. But before I begin with community announcements, I'm sure my colleagues will join me in this as well. You know, heartfelt condolences and sympathies go to the families in Uvalde, Texas at the Rob, parents of children at the Rob Elementary School that were gunned down, horrifically gunned down by a madman. Nineteen children lost their lives to adults. I think many of them are in the hospital as well. It's just, it's hard to even sort of wrap your head around it when I heard the news last night at the award ceremony for the fire department. Such a celebration that that wasn't to come home to that news was just incredible and just don't know where to turn with that. But you know, certainly want to let the the families in Uvalde, Texas, and those of parents that lost their young children, I mean, six and seven year olds, incredible. That the Select Board here in Belmont strongly condemns this violence, this hate, and this evil that was brought upon your community. And we are with you and we will support you in any way that we can. As far as our own community, I had an opportunity to talk today with our Chief Police Chief, Jimmy McIsaac, Patrice, and I know you've spoken to him as well. And you know, I'll say this on behalf of the board, I'm sure they'll echo this, that nothing, nothing, nothing is more important to us in, in, within our town, but the safety of, of our children and our residents. And so to that end, talked to the chief. I know that we'll be meeting early next week, Patrice, with the Superintendent of Schools and perhaps members of the School Committee to talk with them about additional things that we can do in ways that this Select Board can support enhance safety measures within our town. Gentlemen, if you want to add anything to that.
That was well said, Mark, and I think it's yet another example of why we need gun control.
Completely agree. Adam, there's another thing you wanted to mention as well.
Yes, I did. I did want to mention that this is the somber second anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. And we need to keep in mind the need to seek justice and equality for all and to make sure that those in authority treat everybody properly. We're thankful in this town that we have a police force that does that. But obviously, as you see around the country, there are places where that does not happen. So we need to stay vigilant and we need to continue to remember George Floyd.
Thank you for that, Adam. And I know the President today, there was a speech. He had some executive orders that he has put in place for police reform, much needed, of course. And I agree. I think leadership of our current Police Department and the men and women in blue frankly do great, great work within our town. Okay, thank you. Community announcements, the farmer's market is starting next Thursday, June second, and it will run through October twenty-seventh in the, you know, the back parking lot, municipal parking lot in the rear of the stores in Belmont Center from two to six thirty P M. Up until October, then it'll end at six P M. This is a wonderful celebration. There it is. And you can see all of the local farmers that will be there. Some of the prepared foods. I'm sure many of you are watching this evening, participated and gone and purchased goods from the farmer's market. It's been a great celebration. I don't know what year this is. Do you recall, Adam? I know we've been doing this for quite some time. Does anyone remember how many years we've been doing this?
Long as I can remember, to be honest with you. It's been a long time.
Very long time. So please, you know, stop by and, 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 and look at the, you know, on Thursdays, Thursday afternoons and look at this food. It looks incredible. So I look forward to, to revisiting and I think while I would not be tuning in, I know you've gone down and have office hours. I've been asked as well. So I'm going to be down there as well at times, prophesies, which is pretty cool. Okay, the League of Women Voters will be sponsoring on Thursday evening, this Thursday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, of course, seven P M. In which, a warrant briefing, in which warrant articles for Segment B will be presented by the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Jeff Lubian. Other town officials and department heads will be presented in case we're asked questions. I plan to attend as well. So it's a great event. We really want to thank the League for continuing to sponsor this because it really is an opportunity for town meeting members in town, perhaps new, new town meeting members as well to, to ask questions. These are, this is not an advocacy briefing. This is a briefing to understand further the information around these articles, which some of them complex. So I appreciate the League continuing to sponsor this event. And so that is this Thursday evening. June first, beginning at seven P M. This is online, within the calendar online. So if you need to go to that and get the Zoom link, you should. And then finally, we have loads, loads of committees that we will be considering after town meeting. I don't know where we'll, we'll, we'll be starting this in end of June, Patrice, at least June, July timeframe, right? I would think.
Yes, yeah, most likely July.
So the applications, right? I'm assuming four committees are already online on our website for those of you that are interested. And you can see here, there's any number of committees. If you have an interest in either, if your term is up, expressing the interest to be renewed, or if you haven't participated in our committee in town, we, we encourage you to do so. And I've said this publicly many times that we cannot govern effectively without the support and the commitment of the residents that serve on these sixty-plus committees. So we certainly want to continue to thank them for that. Now, there's two new committees that we'll be making appointments to. We're looking at the charge tonight, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Implementation Committee. We'll vote on that charge tonight. Can't quite read that one. And the MBTA Communities Advisor Committee will be voting on that charge tonight as well. So folks, please, if you're listening in on TV or on Zoom, and you have an interest in serving, we welcome that and hope that you volunteer. And I'm looking forward to annual Memorial Day Parade. We're back in a parade mode. It will begin at eleven A M. At, is it eleven A M? Eleven A M. In Cushing Square. I don't know whether the Grove Street Cemetery, we don't, does it only take us thirty minutes to walk down to there? We'll see. But the Grove Street Cemetery ceremony at the Grove Street Cemetery will begin at eleven thirty. There'll be speakers, music and a number of sort of honors that will be presented. So look forward to seeing everyone. It's a great day. Hopefully the weather holds up. Looks like it will. Okay, thank you, Patrice. Okay. So you heard the agenda topics. Are there any comments from town residents? Let me go to the attending list. Or matters other than what is on this agenda? And we do have one from Allison Link. Can we please admit, Allison? Good evening, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Palo. I have one question and one comment. My question is, is the middle and high school traffic working group the only working group that is presently going on in town? Because several years ago, I was involved with sort of a casual group around traffic in the Windbrook area. And I'm sorry, town meeting member precinct eight. And I was wondering, is the middle high school one the only traffic working group? Oh, I might want to start one in the Windbrook area.
No, there is. I don't have to ask Roy to comment because he's been on both of those. There is a Transportation Advisory Group as well. Is that correct, Roy? Yeah, perhaps you want to comment. Yeah.
Well, I think our charge is for the middle and high school traffic working group is pretty narrowly defined to be the area immediately around the new school. So if somebody was going to take up issues elsewhere, I think it would require a new committee or a change in the charge for this committee. I'm not aware of any other committee other than the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Yeah, the Transportation Advisory Committee looks at more broader, broader issues within our town. It's chaired by David Coleman. Is it David Coleman that chairs that? Glenn, Glenn has his hand up as well. Glenn, do you want to respond as well?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that Allison, Allison, I think that you may be referring to some of the working groups that popped up around all of the schools in Belmont. It was under the umbrella of the MassDOT Safe Foods to School Program. The, the middle high school working group was a Select Board appointed committee to look, as Roy said, specifically at middle high school issues. I know there were PTO organizations and parent groups that were doing stuff under the MassDOT Safe Foods Program.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, helpful information. Great. Can I make my statement now?
Yeah, of course, Jen.
Great, thank you so much. I have to say that I was really astounded by the behavior of some members of the Select Board Monday's meeting when discussing the fuel tank issue. Mr. Dash himself described it as an upcoming rant, and indeed it was. As public comment wasn't allowed at Monday's meeting, it's important to state publicly at this meeting that the potential plaintiffs sought legal advice from the firm. One of the leading and oldest in environmental issues contained points that abutters to the D P W yard had been making for over two years that above ground tanks should not be installed within three hundred feet or less from residential neighborhoods. There is actually talk now of certain properties that the Belmont Hill School has bought, potentially having above ground tanks a hundred feet from houses. The letter was accompanied with a petition with two hundred and twenty-nine signatures from residents from all eight precincts stating the same. To characterize their sending this letter and petition now in advance of the Select Board vote of either above or below fuel tanks, as the abutters as playing the town, is ridiculous and hogwash, words that Mr. Dash himself used, despite the fact that Mr. Epstein has been actively promoting above ground tanks by posting on Facebook, despite the fact that Mr. Clancy had not yet had the chance to publicly state his opinion about the issue after his long and very well carried out work over the past year. The abutters deferred any decision about legal notification because Glenn Clancy was tasked with revisiting the fuel tank issue, work that he, as I said, he's carried out responsibly and thoroughly. Mr. Dash stated that this needs to stop. We couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Well, yeah, right. So there's been, let me just say, it's been incredibly divisive issue in town and you know, it really is up to the Select Board, and I think we've shown that to try to unite the town. There will be plenty of opportunity, it seems to me, to be continued this debate at town meeting. So thank you, Allison. Okay. COVID nineteen update is Diana. Comments from town residents? I don't see any further ones, but is Diana Ekman, question cannot be here tonight. I think he's coaching softball. So Diana, COVID update, you know, we've gotten a number of emails of concern, of course, and you know, we're all watching cases slowly go up, you know, with this new subvariant of the Omicron, V A two Omicron variant, correct? I think that's the case. So perhaps you want to give us the board an update. That'd be helpful.
Sure, yeah. So I was going to
Identify yourself, Diane.
Apologies, thank you. My name is Diane Ekman. I'm the Assistant Health Director. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an update with cases and some other information, kind of to start with. So in, in this month of May, in the town of Belmont, we've had four hundred and three cases so far, and that's as of today. The four hundred and three.
For what period of time?
Through the month of May.
Okay, May. All right, thank you.
So that was an increase over April.
How much?
April for the month was three hundred and seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Please, please continue, Diane. Thank you.
So the average age of those cases was right around thirty-four and eighty-one percent of them were fully vaccinated. Our data analyst, Lindsay Sharp, was able to let us know that school cases have actually started to decrease this week. And actually looking at the M W R A wastewater data, that's actually also started to take a decrease over, a little over the past week as well. So those are both some encouraging trends. We don't know yet what the case numbers overall for the town will look like this week, if that'll start to reflect that same kind of leveling off. So those numbers will be updated on Friday. But Middlesex County is still firmly in the high category for the CDC community level metrics at this point in time. It does look like we are starting to see those same trends in hospitalizations, both for Middlesex County and for the state as well. It does seem like the, the growth in hospitalizations is, is starting to level off, which is also good news. So and I also wanted to give just a little bit of an update. I, I think a lot of folks are aware of this, but boosters have been approved for the five to eleven age group. And we actually had, we actually had a booster clinic today, including for five to eleven folks. We had eighty-two folks in that group that were able to get their boosters today, which is great news. We're going to be doing another booster clinic on the thirty-first with our same vendor, Vaccinate RX, and that'll actually be live tomorrow. So for folks that are either parents of kids in that five to eleven age group who are interested in getting that booster for their kids or anyone else that's eligible for booster or any other dose. Yeah, we'll be having clinic on the thirty-first and we'll also be having clinic on June ninth as well. So just wanted to give that update.
Well, thank you, Diana. So where does that leave us? I saw an email today, I think from the Superintendent about strongly, the Board of Health is strongly recommending, not suggesting a mask mandate, right? But these within the schools strongly recommending the use of masks. So where's the Board of Health and where's the Health Department on all of that?
Yeah, so that, that continues to be the recommendation. You know, we're strongly encouraging folks to wear masks, you know, particularly in those environments where you're going to be a lot of, around a lot of folks. It's a little more congested, particularly, you know, at those times. You know, right now, we're obviously continuing to monitor the data. We're in close contact with our members of the Board of Health. And you know, we'll be revisiting it, obviously at the June sixth Board of Health meeting. But yeah, for right now, that continues to be where we're at is really that strong recommendation.
Gentlemen, any comments, questions?
I think those are encouraging trends, Diana, that you're describing. And I think we just stay the course and play it out. But right now, I think things are trending in a good direction, although obviously it keeps, keep having variants and it doesn't go away. But hopefully with the school year ending soon and the weather getting warmer, that things will trend. And well, obviously, we're flexible. As you know, we've gone back and forth on things as the data comes in. So we'll just have to keep our eye on it.
Largely agree with that. Diana, how many hospitalizations have there been in, in May? Do we know? Or April, I guess. Which is the latest month you have data for?
So, yeah, so, so May. So we don't have, so at the current moment in time, our hospitalization data locally isn't super high fidelity, I guess you could say, because it really is largely based on contact tracing data. So it's not, we're not getting the same kind of quality data around some of those points that we were earlier, when there was more intensive case investigation and contact tracing going on. So we don't have really great local data with regards to that. We do know that, you know, we do have higher than average rates of vaccination in town. So we would expect, you know, we do know that's protective against hospitalization, but in terms of exactly how many hospitalizations we've had of residents, we don't have a good number for that, unfortunately.
Okay, and what was the last instance of mortality attributed to COVID?
That is a good question. I will be honest, I do not have a good answer for that offhand. I do not think that we have updated that total death number within at least the past couple of months, is what I would say.
Because I, I know there was a, a number in January. I haven't seen anything since.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just reviewing that now and it looks like it hasn't been updated since the end of February. So yeah, that would indicate that we haven't had any since then.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Diana, is there anything that we should be doing? I mean, there's messaging from the Board of Health, Health Department to the residents for town recommending the use of masks, not, not mandating. I mean, they've done it within the schools. We've seen that email. I saw that today. So is that what the Board of Health has done or the Health Department for the Select Board need to do something here?
Sure. I mean, I think that would, that's certainly the recommendation is, you know, folks should, we're, we're really recommending folks to wear masks, you know, in those environments when they're inside around other folks. And also, you know, consider if you're not fully up to date on your vaccine, getting fully up to date. Also, we just want people to be knowledgeable about the therapeutic options as well. There are quite a lot of folks that would be eligible for a therapeutic treatment like Paxlovid, you know, if they do, you know, become positive. So and it's something where time is kind of of the essence. The state actually has a really great website that you can go on for folks that may, maybe don't have a great resource, maybe their primary care office doesn't offer telehealth or something like that. The state has resources for that. So there's a lot of really good options for all of that. So yeah, just wanting to encourage awareness around therapeutic options, around making sure folks are up to date with their vaccines. And then, yeah, you know, when you're inside and you're around other folks, just trying to wear that mask.
Can you, can you and Wes put together something, put it on the website about that? Just, you know, sort of communicating. I mean, I know we don't have an avenue of communication to our residents, but certainly putting something on our website about, it's a recommendation. It's not a mandate, but a recommendation from you know, town government that, you know, if you're indoors and you feel compromised, you should wear a mask. I think, I think folks do. It's, I mean, I know when I go to Star Market, I wear a mask though. And I'm fully vaccinated and boosted, so we still take that precaution. Does that make sense to do something, you know, sort of a statement? And I would think that I've been talking to you and Wes on Friday as we approach the end of the summer into the fall, you know, we'll see what things are, right, as well.
Exactly.
Maybe, maybe you can talk to Wes about doing something on the Board of Health about posting something online about that recommendation.
Sure, certainly.
Okay, great. Thank you, Diana. Have a good night. Thank, appreciate you participating.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a presentation from the Energy Committee on Electrification of Town Fleet, a policy that they have, a draft policy they've adopted. I see James Booth here and, and Travis has been already admitted, but perhaps that's for this, the Structure Change Impact Group presentation. But is James, are you going to present this evening? I don't see Marty. Roger Rubel is here. So we met Roger and James. Oh, there's Marty and Marty.
Marty's here.
And Marty Bitner. Yeah, thank you. You could admit them. That'd be great. And we have Craig Spinelli, who joined us with Joe, the manager of Light Department, that may have some comments as well, so. It's James. Hey, James.
I'm Mark.
Let's see, waiting for Marty.
So Roger's the person on the Energy Committee who, who took the lead on, on this.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're trying to admit him, I think, right? He's, he's here.
Want to admit who?
Roger Rubel.
I could.
I don't, I don't know why I have, I don't have control of that. And then Marty Bitner is there as well.
Yeah.
So I'm not to, not to
I got Marty. Roger's here.
So gentlemen, who will be presenting this policy to us? Roger, you will be.
Am I? Okay, I'm, I'm going to be presenting Roger.
Okay, Roger, please identify yourself and walk us through. Let's see if we can, can we put the policy on the screen?
Yeah, well, what I did was make a little PowerPoint, which will be easier than
Okay, I want you to go ahead and do that. Why don't you go ahead and do that? Can you post it on the screen or?
Yeah. Can I just open it on my computer and then it'll
Well, I don't think you have rights to post it.
I mean, I can promote him to panelist if you want, that might
Yeah, that'd, that'd be great. Why don't we do that?
So, let's see, what does that say? Join as panel, okay?
Hey, James. Waiting for Roger.
Should James be promoted to a panelist as well? He is. Roger's here. He just needs to unmute himself.
Roger, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and post the PowerPoint.
Okay. All right, I'm unmuted now. And I'm going to open the PowerPoint. Can you see the PowerPoint?
No, we cannot. You need to share.
Okay, hang on.
Takes a second.
Uh, share screen. Okay. Share.
Oh, the beauty and now we see your email. We see your file with
Okay.
There it is. Okay.
Some time ago.
Roger, please identify yourself.
Roger Rubel. Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five, member of the Energy Committee.
Great, thank you, Roger.
Okay, so the Town Administrator asked the Energy Committee to take a look at this and come up with some suggestions. So we went ahead and did that, and that's what I'll be presenting for you to discuss. Okay, so this is a proposed policy to transition Belmont's fleet to E Vs. And the objectives of the policy are to increase the use of battery electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles to reduce the total cost of ownership of the town's vehicle fleet, to reduce greenhouse gas, gas emissions for the town's fleet, and to maximize grants and incentives to reduce the cost of the transition. So a couple of definitions, B E V means battery electric vehicle. This is a car that has only batteries, does not have a gas tank, needs to be plugged in in order to be charged. A plug-in hybrid electric vehicle is a vehicle that has batteries that also can be plugged in to be recharged, but has a gasoline backup engine. A hybrid electric vehicle is a vehicle that has a gasoline or diesel engine and also has backup batteries. The batteries cannot be recharged with a plug. Instead, they're recharged through regenerative braking, or sometimes the gas engine actually recharges the batteries. And then you have a standard vehicle which has no batteries and just uses gasoline or diesel. And then there are heavy duty vehicles that are over eighty-five thousand pound, eighty-five hundred pounds, and there are light duty vehicles that are less than eighty-five hundred pounds. Okay, so this is the essence of the policy. Electric first procurement. If you are going to, if you're a department and you're going to purchase a car, what you need to do is look to see if there is a battery electric vehicle that would meet your needs at a reasonable price. And if you don't find a battery electric vehicle, then you can find, you can look for a plug-in hybrid vehicle. If not that, then a hybrid vehicle, and then if not that, then a standard vehicle. And what we're recommending is that starting in F Y twenty-three, all light duty passenger vehicles will be required to be battery electric vehicles. Departments can request an exemption, but if purchasing a standard vehicle or a hybrid electric vehicle, it must, that choice must be the most fuel efficient vehicle. There are some exempt vehicles. So those are the heavy duty trucks, for instance, the fire trucks, ambulances and the D P W heavy trucks. Police cruisers are exempt only if battery electric vehicles or plug-in hybrid vehicles are not available that meet the department's needs and requirements. All other vehicles, including pickup trucks, vans, police and fire administrative vehicles are not exempt. How to implement this policy? We recommended that be an annual report that would document progress towards transitioning to electric vehicles and gives the rationalization for any exemptions that are interested, that are issued. The town would need to address electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The town would need to address electric vehicle charging infrastructure, which the Light Department already is doing. Uh, in terms of funding, the upfront costs for electric vehicles may be more than for gasoline or diesel vehicles. And departments should budget for that. We also recommend that the town, um, seeks grants and incentives in order to defray the costs of, um, electric vehicles. And then finally, um, there are contracted vehicles, which are things like school buses and the garbage trucks. And what we recommend is that in the R, RFPs for those contracts. A preference be given for companies that can provide, uh, some battery electric vehicles. Or vehicles that are especially fuel-efficient. The, uh, that, that is the policy that we're recommending. Uh, we're happy to, um, take questions and discuss it. But I'd just like to remind everyone that what we're doing is not very complicated. The roadmap to a fossil-free fu- fossil-fuel-free future is to electrify everything and clean up the grid. And then, uh, this is sort of, I think, a symbol to a lot of the climate change problems. If you're in a hole, stop digging. Thank you.
Other members of the Energy Committee, have any comments or adds to this? Marty, James.
No, I thi- I think Roger did a nice summary. Um, the one thing I'm not sure if you mentioned was about. The possibility of leasing for, in cases where, um. You know, if there's not a battery electric vehicle immediately available, then might consider leasing a vehicle to sort of bridge the gap until we can. Uh, until there are more, uh, more options. Um, but otherwise, I think Roger.
Roger, you can stop sharing your screen because we're still seeing. Share, that's all. And, and I know Craig's here as well. I'd like to hear from Craig before colleagues ask questions.
Man, I think just to, to echo what Marty said, that just, um, with, with, um, the market changing rapidly. That I think a thing to avoid would be locking in. You know, fossil fuel infrastructure for, that might be on the road for ten, ten-plus years if, if it's not necessary. And, and being flexible with, um, taking advantage of leasing might be one, um, added way to do that.
Thank you. Craig, anything, any thoughts?
Yeah, just, I guess I'll just add, and Roger touched upon it already. Um, Billon Light, um, we have plans in place already for a robust public charging, um, infrastructure. So, um, we can certainly step in and assist the town with, with, um, securing chargers, uh, for these EV vehicles. And, you know, each location will be a little different. Uh, some of the chargers might be inside, uh, garages, which would require Facilities Department to be more involved. Others that might be in, um, parking lots such as the DPW yard. Um, we can supply the infrastructure to, uh, to assist there as well. Um, other than that, I'd only say from a Belmont Light standpoint. Um, you know, we've been buying hybrid vehicles now for several, several years. Um, what we're finding difficulty in is the all-wheel drive vehicles. But I think this year of all years, there seems to be more in the market. So it, it looks promising that, um, for the light-duty vehicles, we should be able to. You know, accommodate that type of policy.
Tomlin.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm very supportive of doing this and we've talked about this for a long time and I was a PHV driver. I certainly. Uh, support the idea. I have a bunch of questions though about the draft policy. I guess one, um, has this been run through DPW? Were they okay with this? Cause Patricia's shaking her head no.
Yeah, that was actually one of my comments. Um, I have not had the opportunity to share this with the departments. That, um, it will impact, so I'd like an opportunity to share it with them and get some feedback from them.
Yeah. We're not gonna vote this until we release here. The, um, I, I guess my question is, I saw this about being, doing the light-duty vehicles and passenger vehicles, starting with FY twenty-three. But that's like July first, like, like in a month and a half. Is that even doable? Is that even in the FY twenty-three budget? And do we have enough charging stations?
Yeah, probably the answer is no and no.
Cause I, 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 I don't, I, I'm in favor of all this, but not if the dates are completely undoable and I don't want to set us up for failure. Um, if there's, if there's no BEV or PHEV version. Would we, is, is cost going to be considered one of the criteria to review here? Because I, I get concerned that we are going to be required to get the most fuel-efficient version of standard. But it's like super expensive to the point where it makes no sense at all financially. And I'm not saying that should be the overriding cost, but I think it should be a factor to look at. I had a question as to why police cruisers were exempt on this. I mean, maybe there just isn't a model.
They are, they are not exempt. They're only exempt if the police chief says that. There is not a battery electric vehicle that meets the requirements of the department.
Oh, cool, all right. And the pickup trucks, I mean, I know there's like that F-one-fifty, but that's a fairly small truck and it's new and hard to come by. Um, are there trucks like larger than that or, or are those F-one-fifties actually going to be available if you put in? Or you can't get a car, you know, to save your life, even regular cars right now. So, uh, the other problem I have with FY twenty-three is like, you can't buy a vehicle even if you wanted to right now. So it's kind of.
Right, so that, that's why, um, one is, uh, it might lead you to lease a vehicle rather than buying a vehicle. Um, because of that. The other thing is, um, if you were to order a vehicle now, it might come a year from now. Which would, you know, not be at the end of the year, it would be before that. So if you knew that you were gonna buy a pickup truck and, uh, that you were gonna pay for it in FY twenty-three. If you ordered it now, you would get it sometime in FY twenty-three.
All right, this might be something to send to the Capital Budget Committee as well. Um, I, probably too late for a meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM, but. Or wait till the new capital committee comes into play because they do plan for purchases of vehicles of certain values. You know, years in advance on larger purchases. And this is certainly going to throw that planning. You know, not a bad thing, but it's gonna sort of upend it a little bit because now you're looking at something different as far as leasing or selling. So I think they need to be brought into the loop. Maybe it's worth waiting till the new committee comes on, online, the one that we just approved, but just a thought. Um, does anyone know if there are any electric school bus or trash lease companies out there? I don't think I've ever.
There are, um, there are, um, meant hundreds of electric school buses in the country. Um, there are thousands on order because departments who own their own vehicles are starting to. Big departments like San Diego is, are making the switch, so they're ordering.
Obviously, we can't change the current trash contract, for instance, that we're still in the middle of, but. There are things we could do going, like you said, going forward, you know.
Yeah.
Look outside, so I don't know that there are any trash, I mean, we're gonna be doing the trash contract in the next year or so. I don't know that there are any companies right now who have electric garbage trucks.
Yeah, there, there are companies making electric garbage trucks, but I suspect that there are few and far between.
Yeah, so we may be entering into the next five-year trash contract unfortunately with, uh. And then lastly, uh, I don't know what the cost is to lease an electric vehicle and if we could be years out on some of these items until they are. Uh, electric versions are available, how long, what would that look like as a cost? Cause usually the leasing could end up costing more at the end of the day. So, I mean, these are just questions I have. I'm supportive of all the work and the whole idea. I'd like to find the fleet. And all of that, I was just reading through what you wrote and these were all questions that came to mind that I wanna. Put in your brain, because we're not voting it tonight, but obviously the, to, um, see that it might be worth your, the Energy Committee taking a roadshow. To some of these other committees, like talking to the chairs. Not just the department heads, but also, you know, capital budget and, I don't know, long-term capital planning or whoever else is involved in these sorts of things. To talk to them and meet with them, maybe the War Committee, because it's a financial issue as well. And, uh, see what their feedback is before you came back to us. Cause I think their feedback from all these different groups and department heads might be helpful to all of us and garner support as well. Thank you.
Roy, thank you, Adam. Were any thoughts, questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I think we all agree that electrification of town vehicles would be worthy goal. Uh, I think Patrice is completely right that the input from the department heads, particularly in DPW. Is essential for something like this. And also the Police Department. Uh, I know that Chief McIsaac has. Commented, uh, a lot on availability and suitability of electric police vehicles, at least. As, as, uh, given the current state of the market for those things. Uh, this is a complicated issue because, as Adam says, some of these electric vehicles are quite expensive. And, uh. If. You know, quite expensive, like the premium could be in the tens of thousands of dollars relative to a. Conventionally powered vehicle. So I think the, it's gonna be a, a real challenge to come up with a. Procurement policy that, um, satisfies so many competing goals plus recharging. Right now, there's zero recharging in the DPW area, except for one kind of mystery charger near the Light Department. On the right side of the driveway as you come down. And there's also the, what's really a public charging station at the bottom of, of, um. Uh, right, the Water Department. So if it's a level-two charger. Uh, a single vehicle to get fully charged might occupy the charging station for ten hours. And, uh. Yeah, I, I think to do this in a way that. Makes, uh, suitable vehicles available at a price that makes sense for us. And that can be charged and deployed and, and accommodate all of the charged vehicles. That is a complicated problem. And the, so the issue is not the desirability of the goal, but just the. This is really a case of the devil being in the details to, um, make it achievable. Uh, I would also add that in particular with DPW. There's a potential for a lot of misunderstanding about pickup trucks, because when we discussed this a year or two ago. There was a lot of talk about how electric pickup trucks are here and the Ford, uh, Lightning one fifty was the example. That's a very light-duty truck compared to the typical pickup truck that the DPW uses. It's quite expensive for what it is and it's hard to get. So if you consider the. What might be a more typical DPW pickup, like a two fifty, a three fifty or a four fifty. I don't know that there is an electric, a version of those things available and those all, I think, but I'm not sure. Come in under your eighty-five hundred pound, um, standard. So, I, I, I think that there's. It would be best, as Patrice says, to have this vetted by people who would actually be ordering and using these vehicles. To make sure that we are going about this in a way that really doesn't, uh, impede the operation of the departments.
Um, can I interject for a second?
Please, Roger, then I wanted, I had a couple comments, Brad.
Sure, um, the policy says that if there isn't a vehicle that meets the needs of the department, then they don't need to get one. So if they need, uh, a, uh, a Ford, you know, three fifty or four fifty, and there is not an electric three fifty or four fifty. Then they, they don't have to get one. So they don't have to settle for a one fifty. The other thing is, um, do you know how much, uh, a, a Lightning one fifty costs?
I just know that it's more expensive than a conventional one fifty.
How much more expensive?
I couldn't give you the exact figure.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, the problem is you need to look at the details of these things because it's not, it's not more expensive or very. Very more expensive and it's extremely cheaper to operate. So, um, you know, there are two sides of this. You may be paying a little bit more upfront. But it doesn't cost you anywhere near as much in order to maintain it. And then you also don't have to, um, go to a gas station to fill it up or fill it up with a gas tank in the DPW lot. So, you know, there are other advantages of doing it. So I know that there are a lot of obstacles to doing this and I'm not saying that you can like turn over and just do it. But the policy, uh, I think is pretty reasonable and that, uh, it allows for, um, buying standard vehicles. If there is not an equivalent electric vehicle that meets the needs of the department.
So here, um, so thank you, Roger. So, so I think we need to embrace, fully embrace this policy because time starts now. And, you know, we're falling well, way behind our climate action roadmap. And, and I think, I, I agree with a lot of comments that my colleagues made. I mean, certainly, first and foremost, let's bet, let's have the department heads look at this, Patrice. Number one, number two, um, I had, I think, the War Committee, Long-Term Capital Planning Committee. That was formed, they haven't yet met, right, Adam?
They don't exist yet.
Oh, that's right, it's Town Meeting article, right? Yeah, okay, so, um, that needs to sort of be in place for them to vet it. But the, the, to me, you know, I think the policy is reasonable, but the execution is complex. So putting together some type of implementation plan, which, the way I kind of look at things, because I'm an accountant, is. Getting a listing of all of our current fleet, all of it, town schools. And listing out an inventory, which I'm cer- certain we must have, or if we don't, we should create it. And understanding the age of these vehicles and be very deliberate about replacement. Now, I, I realize full well that we have infrastructure needs for charging. I mean, Roy, you mentioned that and I don't know all those sort of different. Charging issues that are there. I know Marty, uh, excuse me, um, Travis has, uh, educated me a little bit on, on. You know, the different charging models, I think, when, when he was on the L back when we met as a light board. And so Craig, it would seem to me that we, we have to put together some kind of a sort of a plan, if you will, implementation plan over the next five years. That establishes, um, charging stations at various locations within town for our town fleet. So the only way to make this happen is just to do it. And that is establishing a plan of action with. Um, very deliberate, with very few exceptions, because I think it's easier to just go out and buy another gasoline vehicle. Um, but not to sort of harm the productivity of what we do or increase dramatically, Roy, to your point, the cost. So this have the department heads vet it, that's my point of view, gentlemen. And, uh, have the committees look at this as well. And then come back and say, okay, uh, whether the policy needs to be changed or tweaked, let's do that. It's just a policy. But the, but the, it's, the policy is fine, Roger. And other members in the Energy Committee, we need an implementation plan. And so I don't know whether you do that, we do that, or someone does it. And really establish something as we move into fiscal twenty-three, so that by fiscal twenty-four, we have a plan in place. And as vehicles look to be replaced, we, we replace three cruisers a year. So I don't know whether that will work. I haven't talked to the police chief about that. We need to see what Jamie thinks. Uh, and then we just establish an implementation plan over the next ten years, so that within ten years, let's hope. Perhaps that's optimistic, I don't know, Roger, that all of our fleet are electric or hybrids. That's kind of where I am, because we're well behind.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're well behind. I, COVID sort of threw us for a loop, Mark, but I mean, the, I think the plan, I don't know if the plan is done. I like, I like having something on paper that we can react to. But I really think that the other department heads, I mean, you're talking about police cruisers that are run twenty-four seven. You know, and that's why they, they go so quickly, because they're never really stopped. Does that battery, how do you charge it when you're running it twenty-four seven? There are things like that that I don't know the department head would have to get involved with.
No, Adam, I'm not disagreeing that the department has need to weigh in and that we want them to, of course we do. They're the experts for, in terms of how their departments are run. But weighing in and in a very sort of, um, you know, urgent way, if you will. And if the policy needs to be changed, fine, but, but it's really the execution of it. It's the implementation of the policy. That's where it becomes complex. I'm sure you agree, right?
Yeah, I know, I'm backing up a step. I'm saying the policy, the plan itself, I don't think is finalized. And then you're gonna have to get into the implementation, but we can't even do any of that with the department.
No, we can't. I want to do that tonight, but, but I think we need to be committed to do something.
Yeah.
I would say for me, within the next sixty to ninety days, let's say, we revisit the policy. And then, you know, perhaps, Patrice, think about how we would put together an implementation plan and who would do that. Perhaps, you know, folks, you know, some of the members of the Energy Committee can support our efforts on that. Cause that's the only way to get it done. You have policies coming out of our earlobes unless we implement.
I'm not looking to delay this. Hey, do it, if we could do this in the next couple of weeks, it'd be awesome. I just know with Town Meeting.
No, 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 Adam, I'm not suggesting that you, and, and I, I think you understand what I'm saying is that. Let's, let's get input on it from the committees, from the department heads, let's come back and revisit it. But then subsequent to that. You know, a lot of issues were raised, a lot of, um, important issues in, around execution and implementation. But we need a plan to execute and implement. And, um, you know, and hope to, hopefully we can establish something within this year.
Yeah, no, absolutely agree.
So I don't know, uh, members of the committee, whether, you know, we talked about that.
Uh, can I just say one thing about, uh, implementation is, uh, there's, you know, a lot of talk about whether there's vehicles available. And right, that's, that's ever-changing, but one thing we know for sure is that the, the charging infrastructure exists today. And so, um, there's no reason to, you know, not move as quickly as we can on getting charging stations in the DPW or the police station. Or where we know they're gonna eventually be needed, just to remove one obstacle from, you know, from moving forward.
Yeah, Marty, Marty, look, there are cost issues, right? So we gotta look at that. We gotta look at, but where would we put this infrastructure? I mean, we, we have to sort of. I mean, look at these issues in a very deliberate way in order for this to work. We have to be committed to this, right? I mean, we are, I mean, all members of the board are committed to this. But we're not going to get any, as Roger said, we continue to continue to dig that hole, if you will. We're not going to be able to get out of that hole unless we have a path forward.
I think, I think one of the groups to talk to about the charging stations is the newly elected light board. And talk to them about it because they're the ones who would be doing that.
So, so Marty, we, we, go ahead, Marty. I'm sorry, you want, you.
And there's grants too. And I, and I think we've talked with Patrice and Craig.
You have rebates on electric vehicles, there's rebates on hybrids. And, and so you have to do that kind of day-to-day detailed analysis to make informed decisions. You know, and cost is issue is an issue, but it isn't just the upfront cost, as Roger indicated, it's the backend cost as well. If you save on fuel costs, if you have an electric vehicle, I don't, I don't know the answers to that. So all of that has to be analyzed. And then we have so many vehicles in town on the town side and school side. We need to start looking at that. The larger, you know, vehicles, the snowplows and, and our fire engines and things of that nature, years away. But we can start with, you know, as you indicated here, light, light vehicles, light trucks and, and cars. Like, we should have been doing this two years ago. So let's do it now and commit to it. I'm committed to it. And I know that Adam and Roy are as well.
Sure.
Okay. Anything further, gentlemen?
No, this is good. Just impart, like, I think we're all agreed that this is direction, the direction we want to go in. We just want to go about it in a smart way and, and not underestimate what Marty just mentioned about charging because there is a big difference between installing level two chargers, which I think are actually, you can almost call them obsolete now versus high-speed chargers, but they're much more expensive, require a lot more infrastructure. And just where to locate them is a big question. So there's just uh, many dimensions to this that need to be factored in to get to a place that makes sense for us.
I agree. I don't want to rush into anything. I surely want to do it in a smart way, as you indicate, right? Clearly. Uh, I don't know the interest of all this. I don't have these details and, and sort of information in my head about cost. We need to look at all of that. Yes, James.
I, I think just to follow up what you said, Mark, but you know, some, I, I think there are going to be some things that are more challenging, you know, 24/7 vehicles, fire trucks and so on. But there's definitely going to be low hanging fruit there where level two chargers, you know, vehicles that aren't moving between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. These are things that, you know, residents are already doing with their own vehicles quite, quite easily in their own homes. So um, charging is something we need to roll out, but we shouldn't overstate um, uh, how much charging needs to be rolled out to get, get going with some of the easier parts of it.
Yeah. So James, if we can lean, lean on the energy committee to, to support these efforts, that would be very helpful. Okay. I think we know our course of action. Some of this is going to have to wait, gentlemen, until after town meeting, because we're pretty busy right now. But, uh, right, Patrice, shake your head. But uh, this is important. And so um, I commit to you that, you know, and the board commits to you that we're going to revisit this, you know, within the next 60 days. And see, we end up, you know, based on input we get from the departments, Warren Committee, Long Term Capital Planning Committee, and any other committees you can think of, Adam and Roy, I, I can't, but.
Plus the light board.
Light board, yeah, of course. You mentioned that, of course. Okay, great. Thank you so much for putting this together and the time you spent on it. Thank you, Roger.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, um. Hybrid participation in public meetings. Boy, welcome that. So who's going to talk about that? Mr. Pedo, our director of IT and Jeff Hansel here from BB and Mama Me Center.
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Jeff.
How you doing?
There you are. Nice to see you. Are you doing both? Are you running the camera and also running the thing and participating or someone else?
Pretty much, pretty much, yeah.
Man of incredible talent.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm for sure screwing something up anyway. Um. Okay, so I'll go ahead and just go over the, this report if that's okay, Patrice.
Yeah, we don't have any, we didn't get something. So is there something that was sent to us that we should be reading or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it up.
Okay.
No, we didn't get anything.
We didn't get anything.
It's just basically an update of where we're at. Um, so I've been working with, um, I've been working with Patrice's uh, office, town administrator and uh, IT department pretty closely. And where we're at is, uh, excuse me. Um, we took the mission that we were given in terms of outfitting many of the rooms for hybrid participation. And we started with uh, looking at what equipment was out there and what equipment we had already bought. One decision I made early on was to wait a little bit until an upgrade was made to these systems because the camera was improved and it was be better for uh, recognition, better for actual AI use in meetings. In terms of the select board room, all the equipment has been installed. It works. It's operational. Tomorrow, we're going to be uh, integrating it with the Zoom room so that it can be scheduled in the town calendar. In the select board room and the art gallery, we are awaiting the imminent delivery of all of the equipment. Um, most of it has already arrived, but our vendor installer uh, does not want to come down more than once. So they're just waiting for the last parts to arrive. Then they will come to Belmont and install the rest of that in a day. Um, that's both the art gallery and to finish the select board. Well, all we're really doing in there is to replace a TV cart with a customized media cart, which apparently for some reason is uh, due to supply chain, it, it's, it's being held up. So that's the first thing. Um, and that would start sometime the week of June 6th. In the terms of the other town hall conference rooms, we have a system that we would be putting in conference room one, which I think is the ground floor conference room next to the town clerk's office. Um, I think, I, I don't know, Glenn, if we've got permission on mounting the TV on the wall there, but the idea there is to put a television, a monitor on the wall and put the system underneath that. And again, that system is ready to be installed. We would just need to make sure that we can do that. Um, the other conference room upstairs, um, which is the on one end of the wall, I guess it's conference room four. It has a, um, the, the wall is curved. It's, it's fairly impossible to mount anything there. So my thought after looking at it with our consultant was to again, put in a portable system or a modular system on a cart that could be set up and be used um, like the, like in the, any of the other systems. But we would not mount anything into the wall or make it a permanent installation in that way. Um, in the conference rooms in the Homer building, after looking at those and also trying to determine how much use they would get, uh, my recommendation is to go ahead and put two TV monitors in both rooms and have them ready so that they can be used in a Zoom meeting. And all it would really take is for that person to hook up or connect the laptop to the monitor and you would could do a Zoom meeting in that room, do a hybrid meeting with people in the room and people on Zoom. Um, and if we thought that there was going to be a lot of use in one of those rooms, we could certainly add a system, but it may be, it may be too much. Beach Street Center, it's pretty, I would say it's impossible to put a system in there. It's, the room is way too big. Uh, there isn't a system that can handle that. And the frequency of meetings with the frequency of meetings, which aren't that much, it would be far better for BMC to come with our cameras and switcher and document the meeting that way as we have with other meetings and um, hook that into a Zoom meeting. That's how a lot of the other towns and cities do this size of meeting anyway, uh, where you have such a large space. Um, upstairs in the Beach Street Center on the conference room, there was talk about putting a system there. That's also not ideal for, for it to be used that way. I was, I, I don't know if it's going to be used a lot. Um, but we could put something up there. It just, again, would change how that room is being used. Um.
Are there, are there meetings up there? I mean, I think the council and agents board used to meet there, right? So they meet remotely. Are there a lot of meetings in that room? Jeff, do you know of?
I, I was told there aren't a lot of meetings in that room.
Yeah, COA used to meet there.
Right.
Before it went remote. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
We certainly could put a monitor on one of the walls, uh, do the same sort of setup, but to put a system in there um, would change how that room is used. Uh, I would also have some concerns about the maintenance of that system because a lot of people are in the senior center all the time. And we have found that, uh, and because there really isn't anybody there who can manage the equipment, we do it on a as-needed basis. I would just be concerned about the maintenance of that system and that it might need constant intervention to make sure it's working for a particular meeting. Um, we have just found that equipment that we set up and staged there tends to need more maintenance, um, because it gets used improperly, but that's just a function of how the building works. So and that's uh, pretty much all I have for now. Uh, that's what we're planning to do in June. Um, and I'm hoping it's all going to be done by July 6th because I'm going on vacation for two weeks at that point.
So, so all of these rooms will be outfitted to, for a hybrid, right?
Right.
So we can, the select board could go, I mean, I think this is where we're heading, right, Patrice? The select board could go back to live meetings. Well, at least ask me in purpose, uh, in, in person and having, you know, hybrid participation through Zoom, correct?
Yes. So the, the goal that, that Jeff and Glenn and Dave have been working on um, is to outfit the rooms for remote participation from the residents. That's been our focus. We, we know that the order is going to be lifted in July, July 15th. And under open meeting law, we have to meet physically, the committees and boards have to meet physically. So the focus has been resident participation during those meetings. Then the second piece, which is number two that you see on your screen, is the remote committee member participation. This has been, this was discussed before COVID. I know the ITAC had come to the board to talk about the possibility of doing this under open meeting law. If the, the select board takes a vote, allows um, committees and boards to have some members that could remote in as long as there's a physical forum. I've been having conversations with the chair of the ITAC as well as um, staff and, and we are determined that once we get the remote participation for residents up and running, now we're going to focus on the committee participation for membership. Um, I know the town clerk has drafted some guidelines. I know ITAC has seen those uh, guidelines and had their own comments. So we really want to work towards a, a product that we can bring to the board. Um, so you can discuss whether or not you want to have uh, committee member participation remotely. So that's.
So we, we, that's, so that's a local, so not, we're standing with the governor might do. Um, remote participation, um, under open meeting law is a policy. Or is it a bylaw that we adopt or just a guideline?
That, that's always been an option under, under open meeting law. We just never have adopted it.
So we, so we, we could adopt the remote participation whereby, and I've read the policy, saw the comments from ITAC, I think we all have. So it would be up to us to determine with additional feedback, I suppose, on how we, as Roy, you just um, reminded me, under open meeting law, we would allow remote participation for some members of these committees that still won't be comfortable meeting in person, right?
Well, it's, it's, you don't have an unlimited license to participate remotely, so.
I understand that, you know, right. It's just a handful, one or two members are, and it's limited in terms of how often you can do that, correct?
No, it's, that's, that's a pol- well, it's, that's not spelled out in the open meeting law, but.
Yeah. And that's what we have.
Some guidelines.
We have to, we have to provide a guidelines or a policy that we would adopt in terms of remote participation by committee members. But the majority, our quorum has to participate um, in person, correct? I think that's how I read it. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is right around the corner. Yeah, go ahead, Adam, listening.
So I was saying, maybe we can have our first in-person meeting July 18th.
But I, I would welcome that, yeah.
I think the other thing too, to under.
Question about the outfitting of the rooms. Jeff, this is a good list, except the room that is not included is the community room in Channery, which actually hosts some pretty important meetings. So is is the plan to do something in the community room or possibly relocate those meetings to the high school where uh, a facility is already available?
I, I don't know what the plan for that is. Um.
Jeff, let me, let me take that one. Um, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, the Warren, the Warren Committee and the school committee meets in the community room, right?
Well, they could meet elsewhere. There's also the town hall.
No, I know that. I know that. Go ahead, Glenn. Go ahead.
I just, I just want you all to be aware that we have a limited budget here to do what we're doing, what's presented on the screen. We did not look at any school buildings because we were focusing on the town buildings. Um, honestly, I don't know if there are available resources through the school department to be able to outfit some of their rooms. We were focusing on town buildings based on the limitations and budget that we had. If you look at, Patrice, if you could scroll up just.
Where were the, where were the school committee then meet? Where, what would be their option? I think they meet in the community room, right? Yeah.
I just want to point out the town hall conference room four, if that is a portable unit, that is something we can share with conference room two. The note here is if the budget doesn't allow a separate system. Based on what was presented here this evening, that the budget that we had to work with is, is, is pretty tight. I mean, we're, we're pretty much coming up to the amount of money that we have available. Um, as I said, this is the school buildings. They weren't considered in this first round because we didn't have the resources to go there. Um, but you know, Jeff and his people have done great work and I think it's a conversation we can have. It's just not something that we captured on the first pass with the money, you know, with the limitations and funding that we had.
It means, it may mean that, that the school committee and the uh, Warren Committee have to move to the Homer Art Gallery, you know, so be it.
Well, that's an interesting point, you know. It's not a bad, it's not a bad room to meet, but it's not a bad room to meet in at all, Adam. It's fine.
The other thing I wanted to point out is the, the committees, we didn't want to overburden the committees either. You know, we, they're going to be, after two years, going back to in-person, trying to figure out remote participation. Um, when we rolled out Zoom at the beginning, we focused on the statutory committees. We kind of held their hand and kind of showed them how to do it. Um, we wanted to get them up and running with the remote participation for residents and then bring in the membership piece, just not to overwhelm and overburden the committees.
Yeah. But I mean, to, to the budget issue, I mean, the Homer, Homer building um, is a perfectly fine place to promote the Warren Committee and School Committee to sort of meet going forward, perhaps.
Glenn, would the, that portable cart system also cover the town hall auditorium? Because we often meet there and we have a large turnout.
Okay, that, that being a larger space, I'm going to let Jeff take that one.
Jeff, it's, it's a terrible place for a meeting anyway.
I agree with that, yeah.
Just, it's not, I think you have, if you have the Homer Art Gallery with a great system and the, and the select board room, you have two great spaces right there and with the other conference rooms.
Well, we've met in the auditorium when we've had, when we anticipate, like when we did the um, main determination on our our trash policy. We met in the, right, Adam, we met in the auditorium there.
Oh, the incinerator site or any, any commercial issue.
I mean, the acoustics are terrible there. So would it be the Beach Street Center? You said that's a place you could outfit, you could film and plug it into a Zoom.
Yeah, the, the Beach Street Center could accommodate larger meetings.
Okay, yeah, right.
I just think, I would rather, if I had a preference, I would rather have at least one large room somewhere than the Homer building conference room 12 and 13, if those are my choices.
Right, no.
Need one large capacity room covered somewhere.
So would that be the Beach Street Center?
I, I don't care where it is, whereas the town hall auditorium, we need one room where like 200 people can come, I think.
Yeah, I'm actually not even aware of meetings that have been scheduled for the Homer Conference Room. So those, if it's not, that, that resource could be redeployed someplace else.
Well, we used, we've met there a number of, a handful of times.
Yeah, when, when we are at a point where, yeah, when we're at a point where there's a lot of people meeting at the same time, sometimes those rooms are utilized.
I, I've probably been up there half a dozen plus times in my career. And I think um, DBA meets there, right?
They're in, they're in the.
The art gallery is on the top. That's clearly, that should be outfitted, but the conference rooms are the small.
Oh, no, the art, the art, oh, I, okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood. So the art gallery, is the art gallery mentioned here? It is, right?
Yeah, we're doing that. Yeah, we need one larger, I think we need one big room somewhere, anywhere. I don't care where, some room where a massive crowd could be. Whatever it is.
The acoustics in the auditorium are terrible, so.
But yeah, we got met there. Across the hall, so.
Yeah, okay, wow, that's.
Let me just clarify something about the Beach Street. It, it can, that's always been a place where we had large meetings and we don't have to install extra equipment in there, so.
Okay, this looks good. I think we can accommodate all committees in town. So what are next steps?
I think well, it sounds like Jeff laying them out. They're working on it to June and we'll implement, we rolled everyone into Zoom a little bit at a time. We'll roll them all out.
Yeah, roll them, I say, come on in. Yeah, we have these portable cameras all over town. So, yeah, great work. Yeah.
For clarity, Patrice, are, are we guaranteeing that every commit, every committee, which includes a lot of subcommittees of committees, will have a remote audience participation option? That seems like.
No, I think what we, we, the plan is, you know, we'll, we'll ask people as we roll this out, if they prefer. if they prefer the participation of, uh, option over a non-participation option. And then there's going to be times where everything's booked up and there, a committee just is unlucky and is, doesn't have that ability. So we're gonna have to prioritize based on if it's a statutory committee versus a committee that's not. It, it's gonna be a lot of efforts from my, my office to kinda coordinate all that.
But in terms of a remote participation policy, I'm not sure we could, well, maybe we can specifically say which committees uh, would be subject to it and which ones would not be. Could we? I don't know if that question is what you indicate.
No, once you make the vote, it, it applies to everybody. The other thing is open meeting law, you know, it could be a telephone and people call in. It doesn't, I don't think designate how that communication is done.
Okay, all right. So, uh, so we've, we're completed, we're completing the, at least the technology aspect of it. And then we'll vote on this policy sometime end of the month of June, because that's around the corner, right? The governor's, when is the governor remove?
July fifteenth.
So we would have to vote at this, at a June twenty-seventh meeting?
So, so, Mr. Chair, the, the, don't forget, this is two part. The first part is to make sure these rooms are set up and available for hybrid participation. The second part with remote participation for committee members, that's, that's still probably a couple of months away as we work through ITAC and other, other town committees. I mean, but the hybrid participation by residents, that is something that we should be able to roll out in July.
I thought Mark was Wait a minute, wait, hang on, hang on for a minute. Hang, hang for a minute, though. Uh, as I understand it, July fifteenth is when the governor will now require everyone to meet in person. Is that correct, Patrice?
Yeah, the, the boards and committees have to meet in person, yes.
Boards and committees, so they, we have to vote on a, I think that, if I'm misunderstanding this, please correct me. I think that, that necessitates us to vote on a remote participation policy before then.
No, if, if the timing doesn't work, then the committee members are just gonna have to come in person until you guys can vote.
I understand, I, I understand that.
Okay.
I, I understand.
I just don't know that we'll be ready by July fifteenth, Mark. That's my only concern.
Yeah, I understand that. And so I guess what I'm saying is that at some point, be it by July fifteenth or some, sometime after that, we're going to have to adopt some type of remote participation policy. I mean, we, we have the technology as part of that, that we're moving forward with it, Glenn, correct?
You have the technology to allow residents to remote into the meetings.
Right.
Right.
And so we have that, but we won't have a policy for remote participation by committee members until we adopt a policy for that, correct?
That's correct.
And the remote participation by committee members also will be using the technology that we're implementing here, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, Mark, it really comes down to the policy. What is that policy gonna look like? And that's conversations with staff and with ITAC.
Right.
You know, that, that's the piece that we haven't pulled together yet.
I, I get it. What we're going to hear is if we don't adopt the policy by July fifteen, we're gonna hear from some committee members that are volunteers that won't be, won't, won't. And I guess that's the choice they'll have to make, is will not be comfortable participating in person. We already started, we already started to hear that.
I understand.
My only point I'm making is that, understanding that this takes time, but we're going to have to adopt the remote participation policy sometime before the end of July, I think.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. Thank you so much, Glenn, for leading this effort and Jeff as well for your leadership on this and Dave too. Dave, you say, Dave, you have anything to add here? Dave, Dave joined.
I recognize you. We don't have anything to add. Glenn and Jeff said everything. Like you said, the only thing is the policy. The technology will all be ready for July fifteenth.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Glenn, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you say anything further, or should we move on?
No, we're good.
Okay, I know we're late. Uh, we need to readmit, um, the chair of the the structural change impact group, Travis Frank. Hopefully still with us.
He is.
And, um, I don't know whether, probably he doesn't want anyone, he doesn't, we don't need anyone else to join at this point. I'll ask him though.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Travis, how are you? Sorry we're bringing you over tonight as always, but thanks for your patience with us and your participation this evening. Go ahead, please. I think you have a slide presentation that you sent to the board and.
I do. Travis Frank, uh, Chair of the Structural Change Impact Group, uh, Town Meeting Member, precinct five. Um, I wouldn't be willing to share and I will start with that and then we'll go through things and I can make this this. Well, we'll see how quickly we can do it. Are you able to see my screen?
We, we do, yes.
Okay, great. Um, sorry, let me just make sure I can see you guys too. Okay, so, uh, I'm Chair of the Structural Change Impact Group. The committee that was formed at the end of twenty twenty with a charge of, uh, looking for ways to increase revenue, decrease town costs or improve town efficiencies of delivery of services. Um, we have a committee that was, uh, basically on the books to be around for about fifteen months. We are a temporary committee or a short-term committee by some measure. And I would, I'm here to report that we have wrapped up our charge and delivered, uh, as as Mark made reference to, uh, four hundred plus page reports on evaluating many different options that achieve these three goals of increasing revenue, decreasing costs or improving uh, town delivery of services. So, uh, what I'll do today is give again a, a short overview of what the committee is, has done. Um, and then try to highlight some of the four hundred, uh, some of the ideas. Um, but I do recommend going to the town website, downloading, uh, the PDF. There is actually discussion of also putting online and making it a little more, uh, internet savvy. Um, we'll see if we can get to that even after the committee, you know, now that the committee is a little more defunct, but we have a volunteer helping us with that. And, uh, but overall, what I'll try to do today is do some highlights, but really there's so much content. Um, but I think one of the things that you'll see I recommended at the end is that there needs to be a clear follow-up on this. Uh, and one of the recommendations, of course, is to implement, or excuse me, is to form a follow-on committee. That would be, I'll call it implementation team, might be the language for that. So with that, uh, we had, uh, I was gonna say ten, but no, we have eleven. We have eleven different members on the committee, I should know, but we, we've been meeting for so long. Uh, all of the committee member were really great, so I just wanna give kudos to all the committee members who dedicated so much of their time and contributed many, many different ways along their expertise. Um, it was really a great committee. It was a pleasure to work with. And, uh, we got to know each other pretty well because we had over a hundred and twenty-nine meetings in these last, uh, fourteen months or fifteen months. Um, I, by one measure, it would be approximately two hundred and fifteen hours, which uh, some of those were two-hour meetings, some, and they multiplied by groups of three, four and ten or eleven. Uh, we spent many, many person hours over the last few years. Um, those, uh, some of the things we did is we summarized the prior efforts of various finance task force or other budget committees. We held community forums to bring together the ideas, um, from residents. We also then solicited ideas from online forum, uh, both from residents, from town workers and from anyone else who found the online forum. Uh, and then we collected those through most of last year, actually. Um, we had several different points where we talked about them, but over the summer, um, we initially, we put all of those ideas into what we called the matrix. Uh, it's a big Excel document, which is also available online. Um, and we initially screened those last July. And after we did some initial screening, we then spent several months, uh, individuals on their own, researching various ideas, getting assigned tasks and writing up, uh, over these, these two hundred more ideas and various forms. Uh, with in-depth research, talking with other town committees, talking with department heads, talking with Patrice, talking with the select board. Uh, and just working through these various topics, uh, of a variety of really complicated topics, some pretty simple topics. And, um, and all of those, we tried to do our best to not just throw anything out, but try to address them uh, and chase them all down. And our goal was not to just produce another report, but we tried to get Chase every idea down until we could at least know what the next step would be and who should take that step. So again, we tried to make it, um, evaluated on its merits of whether it would increase revenue, decrease costs or improve town services. Um, and then we tried to identify some clear next steps that, uh, hopefully the next decision body, whether it's the select board or school committee or department head, um, could implement. So, uh, in the executive summary of the report, uh, we kind of grouped things into these categories. Um, I'll just quickly talk through a couple of them, uh, and, uh, get, uh, basically. But if you have the executive summary, it might be, actually, yeah. Uh, I'll just do it this way, but I was gonna maybe pull up the PDF.
We have the executive summary and, and I think that's a great reference point. We can look at it as you go through these.
So maybe I'll make it just a, a highlighted couple. So in the revenue categories, I'd say some of the big ones are around property taxes and real estate transfers. Some of those are actually pretty easy. If the state passes a new, a real estate transfer fee, Belmont just has to opt in and then there's additional revenues there. Um, under zoning and land use, uh, some of the things there, uh, would be changing the bylaws to allow for hotels and some, you know, smaller establishments. Potentially doing an Airbnb tax, it would be the way I think of it, or but it's the short-term rental tax and fees that other towns have done. With the standardization and centralization, there's been a couple of different things, but one big one was actually revisiting governance. There have been several reports over the years and I'm trying to get it wrong, but I believe in twenty-ten, there was a report to basically think about how to reorganize town governance and and that report has largely done, been unimplemented. And as we dug into various things in the committees, um, some of the decentralization and some of the issues that were identified, uh, over a decade ago are still very much present today. So that our committee would be to pick up, uh, and revisit the governance question and the town, town structure. Um, another centralization and standardization would just be around bulk purchasing, uh, for various departments and, and centralizing some of that. In the regionalization, one of the highlights was actually, uh, potentially with the solid waste contract. My understanding and from our research, it was that when, with the previous, um, solid waste contract, trash pickup was being negotiated, we were relatively close to partnering with a neighboring town, I believe it was Watertown. And, uh, in the end it fell through. But that is something where there was some obvious savings per year, uh, with, if that kind of simple contract, or not simple, but if that kind of agreement could come to fruition uh, as we revisit the next solid waste contract. Some employee, some of the operational employee things, we did write up and I'll, I will name this hub and issue, but civil service. So there's evaluation of civil service in that, um, uh, in the reports around potentially moving away from that and allowing for hiring efficiencies and preventing potentially some overtime, et cetera. EVs and was mentioned, so picking up on the conversations from earlier this evening. Uh, we did recommend that, you know, the, the adoption of EVs and electrification of the fleet. And again, there's a lot of cost savings and, um, I will derage a little bit. So I do think Energy Committee's policy is a good, uh, first step, wearing my Energy Committee hat. Um, and I think that is a very good starting point. So I appreciate the select board's, um, support of it and, and proceeding with the, with forward with that. And a related policy to EVs is actually fleet management. So something that came up during the earlier conversation on EVs um, with Roger was a, uh, Mark, you mentioned, I think, a list of all the different town cars and vehicles we have. Um, I know we did get one as the structural change committee. We got a list, uh, from the town and a big Excel file. But one of the recommendations is actually to hire out a vendor and really do better fleet management, including, you know, service maintenance contracts, getting a better sense of, uh, of its use, mileage tracking, et cetera. Through a, in a system and there's a pretty specific proposal in the structural change impact groups reports on, uh, at least thinking through fleet management. One other sort of cost mitigation, which, uh, is that we're kind of revising the payroll system. Uh, we still, as the town treasurer, uh, still prints and does not do electronic deposits of paychecks. So we still hand out a lot of thing, uh, things and the employees and others we heard from would like to have their vacation days on their pay stubs and various other niceties that I think most of us probably experienced, but we are still, the town is still, um, pretty far behind. So updating the payroll system would be a cost savings and an efficiency improvement and a quality of life improvement for our employees. And that would be great. With the employee compensation and benefits, GIC came up. Um, I know this is important for a variety of different issues in town, but we, and I know that the select board is well aware of the health insurance plan run by the state called GIC, but that was again, uh, supportive of it. And the last thing that I'll just highlight is there's a cost mitigation in which, uh, we could work with, uh, and something that I'll propose, uh, particularly doing some light board, coming maybe from the light board, but working with the police department and, and Patrice, you also would be adjusting the town's streetlights. So, uh, there was a suggestion from the community, I believe residents, to, uh, reduce the town's streetlight brightness now that we switched to LEDs. And it would be relatively simple to push one button and reduce the brightness of them, which would be a cost savings of energy and, and potentially savings of, I don't know, uh, somewhere of fifty, a hundred thousand dollars a year of town electricity costs for street lighting. And over ten years, which is what the committee evaluated things, that's a million dollars. So that would be a pretty easy savings, um, as long as we can keep the public safety and, you know, the, the function of the streetlights, uh, high. So, um, one other thing that we did is we tried to make it useful for anyone that would pick up the report. So with all these ideas, we tried to index them in a variety of ways. So as you can see in this slide, um, this is just a snapshot of some of those themes and categories we have, but we rated each of the ideas. Right, I see you leaning in. Maybe I can make it a little bigger. Uh, we rated at least, uh, uh, rated the ideas on financial impact, operational impact, speed of implementation and ease of implementation. Uh, and you can see now we have under employees and compensation as this category shows. Uh, you know, we have pension liabilities or GIC, um, and we talked about how, how it ranked. And of course, there's the final score and who the administration is, and I believe, uh, you can find it, page number, oh, the page number is the ideas. So anyway, we have all of that. Uh, I think there's like five pages of this kind of table that would allow you to, hey, I care about this and I wanna pick it up and you can now go through and just scan some of the ratings. And these were not every idea, but these were the ones that we thought were, um, had a high enough score where we had a threshold and they made it into these tables. So that would be another way to orient, uh, readers to the important ideas that were coming through. And last, I'll just say, this was, uh, this is the final section, I think, of the executive summary. Um, in which we do recommend an, uh, structural change implementation team. There are some recommendations. I don't think I need to go through them right now. I hope, uh, we can talk about this, uh, at a future meet, select board meeting. Um, but roughly speaking, five to seven people whose job would be to help coordinate across the town and implement the ideas, uh, and help see things through. But, and also potentially provide a continued way for people to submit ideas, uh, that wouldn't be a, just a black hole. So, uh, I hope that was sufficient as least to report out. But again, I would like to thank everyone on the committee that really dedicated many, many hours of work. Um, and did so remotely over the last year and, uh, it was a great team of people to work with.
Well, and Travis, um, it wa, it was sufficient and, and frankly, uh, thank you for your leadership. I know you spent dozens of hours on the report. Um, there were hundreds of meetings and there was active participation by a really smart group of people. But really a lot of interesting ideas, uh, you know, we, we revisited some old ones uh, and brought those forward, uh, and there are a lot of new ones as well and, um, certainly wanna acknowledge, uh, all of their efforts. Uh, it's a terrific report. Um, I've read most of it. I certainly have read the executive summary, a lot of those were more impactful ideas, but I, I would recommend that, um, you know, um, everyone read the report. There's dozens and dozens of ideas. I think in the executive summary, there's like thirty-four, thirty-five ideas that those alone, I think if we could move forward with them in some way, right, Travis, would have an impact on, on town operations. And so it's all about the execution, as we just talked about, on the electrification of our fleet. There's more work to be done. I mean, I think the committee flushed out a lot of the issues and, and, and identifying next steps. Each of the, each of the ideas that are written up have next steps in it and, um, appreciate, I really appreciate your leadership and, and, uh, and I think an implementation committee is necessary. Uh, because this is a continued lift and it, and, you know, I think the board remains committed to structural change, but there's more work for us to do. So I'll stop there and, and, uh, and I also wanted to recognize the fact that, uh, Adam served, we served together before I was re-elected to the, the board. So Adam, Adam was a part of this committee in the early days as well. So with that, I'll, I'll just stop and see what my colleagues think.
Thank you for the shout out, Mark. Uh, yeah, of course. I think this is, this exceeded my wildest expectations when we created this committee, as far as though the, the depth and breadth and the pull, the community input, which was in the hundreds through that portal, which was awesome. The, uh, the level of detail in this four hundred and eighty-one page report is astounding. Um, I did go through the executive summary and then I pulled up some of the details on ones that intrigued me, but there's a lot of reading here, a lot to go through. Go through the executive summary and then I pulled up some of the details on ones that intrigue me, but there's a lot of reading here, a lot to go through. I fully support, I think tonight we should vote to accept the report. I think at our next meeting, we should probably put on our agenda to disband the committee. And um, then create a charge for this new implementation, whatever you want to call it, group and we'll. Have someone pick this up so it doesn't get dropped, because this is, this work is too good to let drop.
I completely agree with you, uh, you know, I think, um, you know, in in um. The sort of communications um, with Travis, uh, by it indicated, if it makes sense to my colleagues. That we would have, and and I know we have time meeting in front of us here, Patrice, but perhaps between now and our next full meeting, which is June twenty seventh. That we'd have some type of charge, which I think you've already sort of put, constructed as part of the recommendation, right, what the charge would be. Construct a charge and then adopt that at the June twenty seventh meeting. Um, and then, you know, ask um, and hope. After dozens of hundreds of hours, right, Travis, that they were giving them enough time off that they're sort of refreshed as. And Travis had these seven thirty AM meetings, which were killers for me, as Travis knows, but. I wasn't always, I was, I wasn't always on time, but I ma- I made most of those until we got it to budget season, but uh. I think that's what we'll do, Travis, if that makes sense to you, is that we'll, we'll adopt the charge at the um, June twenty seventh meeting, then we'll move forward. We'll disband your committee that you led and then we'll move forward with the next one.
Thank you, um, Roy, sorry.
Right, I think Roy might have, yeah, I wanted to turn it over to Roy, but yeah, boy.
Thank you, I, I, I think it's great to have a compilation of ideas, some of which date back go over a decade at this point. And it, you know, as we discussed before, implementation is key and I'm just um. A little unclear about how to address some of the bigger uh, items here, for example, civil service. It, it's, it's not a binary decision, yes or no, civil service, I, I want to assure everybody that. Si- civil service has been the uh, an intensely discussed subject. Internally and the same for GIC, so. Uh, and the, the reason these two um, become complicated is because they, in the end. Are intimately bound up with contract, contract negotiations. So um. It clearly, uh, this board would like to see us uh, exit civil service. Uh, by some strategy and then I think the expectation is to join GIC. Uh, after we see how GIC itself restructures itself uh, with new plan design this year. But what, what role, for example, the, an implementation, implementation committee. Should have in those particular areas, I guess, is just unclear to me. I think the EV policy was a fine starting point, um, a lot of things on this list also. I think also, I, I'm not clear, Travis, how much have you discussed things like fleet management? Or maintenance contracts with DPW, because they have essentially an auto shop on site, so we, we're vertically integrated. Into vehicle maintenance, have you discussed?
I know that, I know that the author of that report, and by the way, I believe all the authors are on the ideas, so that is another. Uh, breadcrumb that we provided, uh, as we did things, I believe the author of that report did talk with uh, Jay and uh, you know, other, other. Jay, I think actually talked with Roger, Ro- Woval, um, and tried to coordinate across that and uh. So I believe we did get input from them, um, I'm not sure we fully, you know. Understood or or internalized the idea of that they're doing all their own maintenance, but. Um, I know that the idea overall was less about where the maintenance was being done and more about tracking the maintenance and understanding the costs and. Understand the mileage and and overall uh, turnover and that kind of thing and optimizing. You know, trying to think about how to optimize fleet management, so.
Okay, um, well, I don't know, Patrice, I guess I would ask you, uh, as really the. The point person for day to day uh, contact with all the different departments that are. Uh, I guess implicated by this report, uh, what your sense was?
Um, my general sense was that the committee did reach out um, in some aspects of some of the recommendations to departments, they let them. Review some of the, some of the wording to the recommendation, um, so I think department heads wouldn't be blindsided, but. I would say that um, there, there is a lot of nuance within the way towns, departments operate, um, you mentioned the union one. I think it, I think an implementation committee would have to work very closely with the departments. Um, to make sure there's no adverse impacts um, to how the departments run and operate, uh, fleet man- management, we've talked about internally. Um, and there would be an additional cost if we did go and and outside and 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 outsource that. Um, we have somebody that, uh, an employee now that does the fleet management, um, whether or not, um, it needs to be improved or things need to be added, I think those conversations are. A valid and I think that those conversations need to happen, it's, it's just who's going to do the work, is it going to be an employee or are we going to outsource it? Um, either way, there's going to be some additional cost to do that.
So I, I think one of the immediate values of an implementation committee is. Really just to, to maintain this list and assess uh, what progress is being made on each one of them. Uh, without necessarily prescribing to the departments how to actually do it.
Yeah, if I may, um, and I. Will double check by pulling up my notes, um, at some point, uh, you know, I don't think, uh. A lot of the, like, if you just look at the words here, it's, you know, review the recommendations, uh, monitor the progress, um, devise a way to collect more ideas. So some of those ideas are not necessarily the people who will decree to department heads or anything like that, I don't think that's our goal, I think the goal is sort of to be. I mean, the realization and I, and I am pleased, believe me when it's like, we talked about this a lot on the committee, um, about there's, there's no bandwidth. Um, and many, in many parts for the department heads and and, you know, town administrator's office and committees even, uh, select work, et cetera, school committee. To really pick up a ton of these ideas and run with them, so if the implementation committee can do its best to. Uh, identify where we really think we should, the town should be spending its time, how to work with departments. Um, and basically kind of be, you know, the dog with the bone in his mouth and just go out, maybe a better, my favorite way to say, to be the champion of ideas. All of these ideas, the only way any idea ever gets done is if there's a champion to really help see it through. And since everyone is stretched so thin, um, the committee could be, help be the champion and. Help do the coordination and and work across uh, town departments with town departments to get these things done, uh, or whoever the decision body is, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Patrice, you, you hands up?
Yeah, I just, I want to just echo everything Travis just said, I think sometimes we get so busy, um, because there's just so much and and we are stretched so thin. To have an implementation committee kind of saying, okay, guys, we're over here, have, what's the status, you know? Pushing us along so that there is some progress on some of these things.
I'm not sure it's pushing, I'm sorry, please finish it, go ahead.
No, so I, I do think there's some value to the um, implementation committees, just to kind of help us push that through.
And I think as we talked about this and um. You know, that, that became abundantly clear, you know, we certainly chat and I mentioned as well that, you know, folks are pretty stretched thin. Uh, these are really wonderful ideas and certainly we need to run them down, more than they've been run down. And so an implementation committee could own that responsibility without just saying, hey, where are you with this? That could assist with that, if there's research that needs to be done, perhaps as even we did meet with uh, at least two towns, uh, we didn't get a chance to meet with. Other communities as well, and I know you have ongoing discussions with, you know, other town administrators and managers in other towns, Patrice, you know. Either on informal or formal basis, some of that work can be done as well, I mean, I, I think that the implementation charge, committee charge should be. As it stated here, but as Travis indicated, champion. Some of the thirty five plus impactful ideas, perhaps there's others as well that they would look at. And not just checking with a department head and say, hey, um, Director DPW, where are you on that, but really assist. And running it down and doing research and helping to move it forward in some way, because you're right, because all of our town employees, department heads are stretched. So that, that's why the implementation committee idea came up, uh, at the end of all of the work that was done. So I fully support it.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please do.
I move the select board accept the report from the structural change impact group entitled recommendations to improve Belmont's finances and operations dated March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Own favor?
Adam Dash, I.
Roy Epstein, I.
Mark Plo, I. Travis, thanks again, I know the amount of time that you've spent on this, even outside of the meetings that we had in terms of editing the report and. I mean, there were meetings in which ideas were gone through, I mean, it was just uh, very um, time consuming. Um, I wouldn't call it tedious, but important impact, uh, in- input was provided as well and uh. Think you led in a very effective way and I appreciate all of those efforts, thank you so much.
Here.
And so, um, we'll plan to meet again, if you'd like to come back and meet with us again the end of June. And uh, I think Roy, uh, excuse me, Adam, what you said, we'll disband. That will disband the structural change impact group and then reform the new group, I think that will be the, that will be the. Agenda.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Um, I have one just quick question, is there someone? Who will help author the charge that will be reviewed, I don't know, I don't feel I have the skills, but I'm happy to. Reach out to me if you need me.
I, I think, I think you've sort of constructed the idea here, right, because I think we kicked this around, um. In terms of the number of members, you don't want another fifteen member group, I mean, I think we added to it, I think we added some additional members along the way, Adam.
Yeah.
When, when, and which made sense, because they, they were very productive members, and so I think some of the folks that were, that are on the committee today. We hope, will we up for additional responsibilities?
Yeah, I think all you really need to do is take this slide and put it in a more, our typical format is pretty much all there.
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you for that, Patrice, and it'll be well after town meeting, I look forward to meeting with you again, uh, Travis on the twenty seventh of June.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you, take care. Alright, so uh, running a little bit behind tonight.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, more than a little. Thirty minutes, thirty five, uh, can we admit, um. Mark Haley, hopefully you're here, Mark. And I don't know if Ted Galantay is going to join, but Mark Haley.
I see Mark Haley, yeah.
And. Um. I guess that's Mark, uh, there's Ted, hey Ted, how are you, thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, everyone, thank you.
And Mr. Haley.
Good evening.
Hey, Marcus, do you want to admit any other members of your, of your team, or perhaps if they want to raise their hands, they can comment as, as, as we finished today.
I, I would rather have them raise their hands, we did not post this as a meeting of our committee.
Okay, okay, that, that, that's true, thank you, alright, so, thank you, Mark, I've seen, I think I've seen this. Perhaps already, at least some construct of it at the um, the ring financing committee uh, last week, so um. Are you going to go through it or is Ted or both of you?
Ted, Ted is going to go through it, I'm just going to have a little bit of opening statement, as you and I discussed, is to just give the. Select board some idea of what we have done relative to our charge and some of the questions we may have going forward.
So let me, yeah, Mark, so Mark, before you do that, um, if I could just briefly say how we got to this point, just briefly, and I, I know we all know it. Is that the premier ring design committee was formed by the select board after the ring finance committee determined that, you know, we really could not design. A building project, and so, uh, and I'm going, and my intent is under Article eight to sort of talk a little bit about this, have some information presented to town meeting members. And so, uh, as we started to vi- visit on, you know, how we could um, fund. And um, perhaps a new rink, um, that had been voted upon by the school committee, select board. Um, to be cited uh, in back of the old rink, uh, I think that's option two, I think that was what it was and. The select board formed this committee and um, I was appointed to it as a select board represent, representative. Of it, became the chair, uh, but uh, after a handful of meetings, we determined quickly that, you know, we could not design a building. Particularly after we had gotten funding, um, allocated funding from the state through the efforts of Senator Ronzberger and. Representing Rogers, a quarter million dollars of design funds. And so, um, in working with the town moderator and Pat Bruce, the chair of the permanent building committee. Um, you know, we constructed an idea to form what is now called the premier ring design committee and the select board appointed its members, so. With that, Mark, take it away.
Okay, so the select board appointed this preliminary committee in December. And our first charge was to engage an architect and an owner's project manager as required by the state. That took about two months because of the process that you have to go through. Which is laid out by the state, we ended up having the architect come on board in mid-March, the uh. OPM, which is CHA, came on in about mid-Febuary. Uh, we met with the superintendent of schools and the athletic director to find the school requirements for the rink. We had some discussions, very brief, but with the recreation department, to what their needs might be for a new rink or a new facility. And then, uh, we started to lay out the architect after he came on board in about mid-March. Started to lay out the rink in accordance with the program requirements that I had provided to him based on the discussions we had had with the, some of the stakeholders. And he laid out the rink and, and we went back to the AD and the superintendent to make sure that we were interpreting what they needed. Properly and also to understand with the, some of the members of our, of this committee are in fact in the hockey group. That understand what the hockey programs need, but this is not just for hockey, it's for all the sports and all the uh, high school sports in spring. Fall and winter and also for the community to use. Uh, either when it's a rink or when it's maybe in other parts, the other parts of season, like when the recreation department runs their summer camps. It wants to all be in this, this here, uh, the architect will go through and describe some of the uh. As- aspects of the lockers and rink, uh, we have come currently developed, assigned, developed costs for this. Uh, we're not necessarily. Disposed to divulge those tonight, uh, but uh, right now we're working at trying to get those under control. And we will be presenting at some point in time in the future, uh, a, a cost for renovated. An expanded rink and one for a new rink, and we've looked at four different locations for the rink. Uh, and we'll be able to present those, some of those you'll see tonight. Um, we held a pub- public forum to get input from the residents and that was quite uh, good. The other piece that somewhat is out there is a dangling chat is, and we'd like input from the select board on this is. The status of the Whitefield House, the parking in the fields, which was never part of our charge. But has now been somewhat orphaned by the high school, middle school building committee, and I think going forward. Does that get rolled into the future building committee, which is what our Article eight of the warrant talks about, is appointing a building committee to take this. Task forward through final design and construction. With that, I'll turn it over to Ted unless any of you have questions before we turn it to Ted.
Yeah, let's uh, let's proceed with the presentation then, and I'm sure my colleagues, colleagues have a bunch of questions, so.
So, okay, good evening and thank you, everyone, for, for taking the time to look at this, um, I'll, I'll go through this quickly, there are.
Ted, please, please identify yourself.
Okay, sorry, Ted Galante, the Galante Architecture Studio, um, taking a look at the, at the uh, hockey rink and and feasibility study. So, um, you, you know, the building, the building is from nineteen sixty nine, nineteen seventy one, um, has really. Um, served its useful purpose in, in the, in the town of Belmont, um, the, the next slide shows. Uh, some of the deterioration in the building, there are, you know, it, the, um, deficiencies in this building are really too long to list. It is fundamentally um, uh, not code compliant in any possible way. Um, it, it does not meet energy code, it's probably one of the biggest energy users in the town of Belmont, is a, is a speculation. Um, it, there are holes in the roof, some of the steel is rusting, uh, there are birds living in the building, um, the next slide shows. Um, what was at, at some point, um, an attempt to um. Uh, put in a handicap ramp, I'm not sure who's controlling this slide, so can we go to the next slide? Uh, so, thank you, thank you, so, so, you know, the, 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 the lower left shows some, some. Uh, idea of a handicap ramp, but it is uh, woefully inadequate and on, on so many levels. Um, as we can see, the building is really met its useful life, was never really planned as a building. Hockey rink, but has been used that way for a long time, um, the next slide, please. Uh, shows the Whitefield House and some of the uh, program elements in here. And, and this is, you know, sort of an example of where the feasibility study has been starting to shift, because really we were to look at the hockey rink itself, but the, the scope of the. Um, effort has grown a bit, uh, because as, as part of the analysis of the rink is really an analysis of the land. And what can fit on the property west of Harris, the Whitefield House is one of those critical components, it does house. Um, recreation department and lockers and um, sports um, uh, facility lockers. Uh, but the building again, um, is uh, not code compliant in any possible way, the next slide, please. There are um, uh, fundamental flaws in the building just due to its age. Um, it, the building is cracking and crumbling and and has, you know, holes in it and. The building is cracking and crumbling and has, you know, holes in it and is not ADA compliant. It is nearly impossible to make ADA compliant. And so after ninety years of useful service, it's really not a building that can be That we would advise to rehabilitate in any way because it because it would require fundamentally rebuilding the building To make it code compliant. The next slide, please, it just shows a couple of elements in there that are There's a Belmont Light transformer in there that we've discussed with Belmont Light is relatively easy to move And a couple of other parts and pieces. So if we go down to.
Come and roll to the next slide. Who's controlling that? Yeah, there you are. Okay.
Yeah, so that that just shows that the transformer and some inaccessible things. So then the the program overview, Which is really the next, yeah, thank you. And and this is what what starts to come together when we look at the The ice rink together with the White Field House, along with some optional program, right? So if we just look at the ice rink, it's really the the ten, sorry, I guess that's two, four, six, eight, ten, yeah. Ten circles that are under the existing programs, Skip Bigorillo Ice Rink. Those ten circles are what's in the the Ice rink, but all the other elements have been sort of filtering into the program as we develop it. And all of those other elements are increasing the footprint of the building in in substantial ways, quite frankly. And so please go to the next slide. So so this is a diagram that shows all of the possible program items that have been talked about over the last month and a half To to get us to this point with a lobby and and public dressing rooms for 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 public skating, High school locker rooms, hockey locker rooms, seating, of course. Sorry, football locker rooms or or sports locker rooms that aim toward the Harris Field, seating around the ice rink, the ice sheet, of course. There's been discussion, we we need all of the support at the front concession and and Demboni, and there's been some very loose discussion about tennis courts. So all of those pieces together start, have been starting to influence how we consider the rink. And so if we go to the next slide, We start talking about site phasing with really some preliminary field test visits, test fits. And I think, you know, one of the part of the 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 struggle that the committee has been working with is how do we Renovate or propose to put a different rink on this location on west of Harris And not consider all the all the fields and all the other implications. So so fundamentally, if we renovate the building, This is a diagram that shows the existing conditions before renovation. You see the blue rectangle as the existing ice rink. Harris Field is on the far right, and then the sports fields as they currently lay out from from the blue dot, blue rectangle Heading west. The White Field House is is closer to Concord Ave and Concord is the diagonal, of course, along the front. So the next slide, please. If we expand, renovate and expand that field house, that 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 ice rink, The sort of beige area is what we believe a contractor would need to go in there and do that. And a renovation is is very possible for this building. A renovation is a very strong candidate To give Belmont a new ice rink and and it could be a renovation that is a renovation in kind That limits the program only to what's in the hockey rink currently, or it could be A renovation and expansion, which which is what we're illustrating here, and that would include many of the other Locker rooms and things that have been have been talked about with the committee that are currently in the White Field House. And so this is sort of a during construction, we would need this kind of a zone to do the work. The next slide, please. And one potential layout of fields is is are the fields that are Now they are currently between the existing hockey rink and near the mobile station to the west. And this would be a similar version to that, a slightly more compressed version. But the footprint of the rink, because because the footprint of the rink grows as an expansion. The next slide, please. This is back to the original rink and the current field layout. And so the next slide, please, Shows what might happen if we keep the existing ice rink Operational and functional for the duration of construction and build a new Really athletic complex that is parallel to Concord Ave with some of the site constraints and the lay down area for construction. But this would allow a building to be built with the ice rink remaining intact. And the next slide, please. The next slide shows The the footprint of an ice rink and the fields, which gives them a little bit more breathing room From Harris Field over to behind the mobile station. They're they're laid out a little bit wider, but this is a new building. This is not a renovation. So then the next slide, please. And I think these two, this really starts to illustrate what the floor plan might look like. So here, again, we we see the The expanded ice rink in its current location with the fields. The next slide shows Thank you, shows the existing floor plan of the existing building. And if we click on the next slide, we see that the building expands slightly, but the ice sheet stays roughly where it is. And so the additional, at the top of the drawing, we see a concession area and community room with some Public skating area, group restrooms, which are sorely needed. Vertical circulation, the stairs and such, and then two referees locker rooms, sorry, one referee's locker room With with locker rooms along the top. There are four locker rooms there for high school sports. Down the right hand side of the plan, We see a number of hockey related support elements. The the clearest is the Zamboni at the middle of the ice sheet. And then down at the bottom of the plan on the far right, far right bottom, you see the forty Harris Field dressing areas. There's two two rooms there for people to to dress and there's some overhead doors shown so the So the athletes can bolt out onto Harris Field. The right hand side of the plan shows the Hockey dressing rooms, four hockey dressing rooms with some office space and some storage. And so So really, it's a question of how big the building gets and 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 what the mandate of the or the direction, I suppose, From a programming perspective is for the building. Do we do we just renovate the ice rink, which is doable? Or do we renovate and expand, which is also doable? But that's sort of what this is illustrating. The next slide, please. The next slide shows really the the bents, as they're called. It's what we're cutting the building in half. This is a section through the building. The right hand is the bleachers looking toward Harris Field. And this is the 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 structure of the building as it currently exists. The next slide, please. This is showing the expanded building, so it's primarily expanding to the west away from Harris Field for some additional Space to to house all of the high school locker rooms and such that are currently in the in, or some of them are in the White Field House. And then the next slide, Really, this is an illustration of the renovated and expanded rink. But one thing that I want to make clear is that that the the rink in this illustration is covered with photovoltaic panels Because there's been a lot of discussion about net zero, and and this is a facade of the building facing Concord Ave, which is also building integrated photovoltaic panels. And and the idea of Generating green and energy on site is a is a real strong possibility. The next slide, it talks about a new building, and this is the same idea, concept sketch Of a the the building parallel to Concord Ave with photovoltaic on the roof. And then the next slide is of the Photovoltaic on the facade building integrated. This is not thorough design in any way. These are illustrations to to talk about the idea. And so one of the other key components that we've talked about is net zero and The potential for a townwide net zero approach, but there's this notion of embodied energy that I want to talk about for one second. Embodied energy is all of the energy that was used to create the existing rink. And thank you for clicking through the slides. This is, it's to show what we can save and and the energy that was used to mine the materials, Ship the materials to the site and create the materials and and install the materials is embodied in the building in in some way. And so so here, there's potential brick to be harvested and 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 you sort of capture that embodied energy. The next slide, please. That this this slide is showing the bents, the structure, which we believe the structure can be reused, the primary structure. But the next slide shows the pearlins, the next slide, please. Shows the the roof pearlins, which we don't think are going to be so useful structurally. We probably would have to rebuild that part of the structure anyway. But those pearlins can potentially be harvested to be used on other parts of the building, much the way The Seattle Kraken did in in Seattle with with reusing a World Fair roof And building an ice rink underneath that roof and and capturing some of the embodied energy and making that part of the narrative of the building and the function of the building. The next few slides can be clicked through rather quickly, please. They they're just illustrations of all of those components and materials. And then we get into sort of a little bit more of a detail of how we can put, you know, the the carbon neutral Building, maybe geothermal wells, photovoltaic panels on the roof, photovoltaic panels on the walls, and harvesting some of the energy. And so so those are the two of the locations that we that we talked about in this presentation. We we studied five different locations in multiple different scenarios. We studied putting parking under one of the buildings. We studied Putting tennis courts on on existing building and new building. And we're really Starting to hone in on on what those dollars start to represent as we as we think about this. But one of the key pieces is a schedule, which is always tied to dollars. And we we, if we look at the schedule now, we have the feasibility study, you know, ending sometime in early June. And and really getting schematic design going to develop the one or, you know, Possibly preferably one of these schemes, possibly two, you know, June through July. And then design development in the summer, construction documents in the fall and early winter, And then go into construction. And we we believe that we've built this schedule so that really if we are renovating and replacing The existing rink or renovating and expanding or just renovating the existing rink, we really only miss one season of hockey. Cambridge Youth, sorry, Belmont Youth Hockey doesn't use the rink in the early months anyway. And and so we believe that we can miss one season and 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 move the project along. At the same time, cost escalation in construction, everyone's aware that has been rising almost asymptotically. And, you know, Approaching this project with this kind of a schedule will save the town of Belmont money. We don't know how long the existing building is going to last. If there's a catastrophic failure at some point, Meaning some major refrigeration goes or something more severe happens, then then the town is out of a rink altogether. It's currently questionably safe. There are pieces that really need severe attention. And and we think it's important and really a benefit to the community to move forward in a way that will Take a a building that is really not code compliant, is really using excessive amounts of energy And make it a safe place for the children in Belmont and the adults and the community. So so that's where we are. And I open that up to questions.
Yeah, so Mark, do you have anything for for the add here?
No, I'm all set. I'll open up to you.
Okay, so so Ted, let me, I have a handful of questions and I'm sure my colleagues have a bunch as well. So a couple of questions. The renovation and expansion and the new building is the same sort of square footage?
So if we were to renovate the building as it currently stands and replace it in kind, it's roughly thirty thousand square feet, twenty-nine to thirty thousand square feet. If we if we add program to expand for to to replace the White Field House, the other thing, right? So then we're talking about a building that's roughly forty-eight thousand square feet. And the new, so that would be a renovation and expansion of the existing, would be forty-eight thousand square feet. And we are also, the the building design also, if it's a new building, it would also be forty-eight thousand square feet. So I think I think the answer to your question is yes, but I wanted to just be clear about that.
Yeah, and so and so to me, it seems, and and I think the middle and high school building committee's plan had always been to deconstruct that White Field House that was Ninety years old. It's unusable. That we would have to certainly certainly seriously consider One or two of these, the only two options to me that seem viable, and you know, we see my colleagues think is renovate, expand, Which perhaps might be a little cheaper, I don't know, or new. And the new is a new site, right? And and in the new site, let me ask you, you you said the expand and renovate, you lose one season. Is that what you indicated to me?
That's what I believe, yes.
The new building, you don't lose any seasons, correct?
We believe that we can do it without losing a season, yes.
Provide, provided, if I can add something, that provided is located in a Either along Concord Avenue or behind the mobile station, if it's located in in the site of option two.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
I just want to make sure your colleagues do too. If you put it, if you put a parallel tracks, you lose, you lose a season also.
So the the consideration here, and we don't know the answer to this, and perhaps If the new building committee is formed, and hopefully will be, we'll need to look at this, right? Because I'm assuming that you've laid out two general options that will need further consideration. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. And this is taking, the whole idea of the Premier Rink Design Committee was to take it to a point where you can hand off this wonderful work that you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the new temporary building committee that will be formed at town meeting within the next two weeks. And then, of course, the town moderator has to appoint members to that building committee, but we haven't really lost any steps here along the way. And then that building committee, whoever may serve on it, hopefully you'll continue in some capacity, Mark, Will then decide which option makes the most sense. I think that's where that's going to lay, right? In consultation, it's, you know, clearly with the school committee and the Select Board on that, right? Because if you recite, We've talked about this, then, or both, if you you leave it where it is and it's a renovate and and expand Or a recite of a new building, it it really needs the school committee who owns the land to decide that that's appropriate and Programatically will work for them and clearly will work for the Select Board as well. That's the plan. So the question then I have is if that's the plan, which is how we set this all up and set this in motion, You've narrowed it down to sort of two ideas, it seems to me, and two sites. Existing or Concord Avenue, perhaps, which You, we're going to get input on that perhaps from maybe some of the residents if it is on Concord Avenue or closer to Concord Avenue. It's pretty close to Concord Avenue now. Will you be, will the building committee, Ted, be in a position? We have to, when the debt exclusion on the ballot needs to be voted by when? August, early August, Patrice?
I think it's like August first or something.
August first.
So that pretty much leaves a month and a half, if that, to, on the schematic design, Ted. And I know we have the whole month of August and September for design development. Will the schematic design present a cost estimate For the new building? And when we put the debt exclusion on the ballot, Patrice, do we need to have numbers? I don't think so, right? I don't think so.
No, there's no number on the debt exclusion.
But you need to tell voters what they're.
But you need to tell people what it is.
You need to tell voters, but by the time between that point And site plan review by the planning board, would we be in a position, Ted and Mark, For debt exclusion vote where the where the residents of this community understand full well the cost, Amount that we fundraise and the site. That's the goal and it's tight.
Ted, I think what he's saying is is sometime in September, October, we need a hard number to go to the voters of the town. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Of course. I mean, they can't run a debt exclusion unless they know what they're paying for. What the impact there is on their tax bill, but yeah.
Right, Mark, I do think that I do think that it is possible to do that. I think that's an achievable deadline. It 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 backs up to the question of which scheme, in which direction do we head in? I think, how big is the building? Is it, is it going to be, you know, in a renovation and expansion? And if it is that, It is, if it's a forty-eight thousand square foot building, we can absolutely put figures to that. If it's going to be the twenty-nine thousand square foot building, We can also put figures to that, but we just need to know sooner or later.
Right, and that'll be helpful. I mean, but if you go for the twenty-nine thousand square foot building, Ted, and I know there's further deliberation on this matter, That presupposes that you use this White Field House. That's unusable. There's there's no disability access issues. I mean, it's been around for ninety years. I was there when I was there using it in the seventies, so it was old then, so. Doesn't make sense to me to continue to sort of suggest that we'd use that. But but that being said, I'm sure my colleagues have a bunch of questions, Adam.
Oh, yeah. I guess Mark touched on one, which is talking to the school committee clearly because we can't really, none of us can really agree what's going to happen.
And Meg and Meg is on the committee.
Is the intent for this to be a year-round facility?
That that will be a decision. It will be designed as a year, a year-round facility, Mr. Dash, but that's a decision that Whoever runs the rink would make. And and you'd want to look at it economically. Can you rent the rink during the summer and justify the operation costs?
Agreed. And also the plan's going to have to show the parking and lay that all out so we know what we're dealing with. And you've got, obviously, you know, with Dover, remember, we don't have a massive zoning problem, but you do have to meet the requirements for the parking for, you know, for that. And the, I have to say, I I do like the idea of this renovate and expand. If, for what it's worth, if that's doable, I I'm surprised that it's doable, but I'm glad that it's doable because we often hear these buildings are too far gone, but it sounds like there's some bones here to work with. I do have a grave concern about shoving that building up against Concord Avenue. I mean, it doesn't bother me personally, but I think a lot of the neighbors there would feel that as a very large imposition, shoving it up across the street from their houses. It's a pretty big building, especially if you're doing the photovoltaic on the outside, it's going to be shiny. I think that's asking a lot of the neighbors. I think if you leave it where it is, it's kind of the path of least resistance. And, yeah, maybe in the short term you lose a season, which is bad, but over the fifty year life of the building, I think that's a trade off I'm willing to make. And then obviously, as Mark said, that getting the debt exclusion ready for the ballot, I mean, the library is going to be on. We know that in in November, and I think at some point, gentlemen, soon before August first, we have to decide if we're putting this on, if the rink is ready or the rink and library, one ballot question or two.
Right.
Because we have to send something to the state to get approved because it's a state election ballot, so we kind of have to decide that. I mean, Ellen Cushman could tell us how early we have to give her the go ahead, but it's before August first, it's July something. We don't have a lot of meetings, like only a couple more meetings before we have to probably make the call. And I've been talking to people and I've heard people on both sides of that very strongly that they want them separated. I've heard people also say they want them together so you don't have, I don't know, I guess the prototypical jocks versus the nurse fighting each other at the ballot box or something. So I I don't, I don't know what what the best answer is. I've been sort of gone back and forth on it. But if if the rink is, first off, is the rink going to be ready to go? You know, to be on the ballot. And then secondly, if it is, how are we going to play with that on the ballot? How it was a one or two questions? I don't know. But I'm just pretty.
I have to talk about that, Adam, because, you know, I'm kind of, I'm leaning one way, but I really would like to hear what you and Roy think about that, so.
Yeah.
But I guess, yes, whatever way that is, but I mean, I'd like to hear, I I think we do need to decide that, without question.
Soon.
No, I think that's right. We could start to deliberate that in June if you want. I mean, I'll leave it up to you and and Roy to let, if you want, that as an agenda topic, sort of preliminary discussion in June, if the temporary building committee is formed and we're moving forward, let's kick it off because we may debate that quite a bit.
Be nice to have the temporary building committee in place and populated. I don't know how quickly that can happen.
Yep.
But, Mr. Dash, is we don't have, you don't have to disband this preliminary committee until that next committee is in place. And we will continue running this design into schematic design to make sure that this thing keeps moving. Now, was the whole intent of starting the plant, a preliminary.
No, absolutely, but I'd say I'd like.
Architect on board and all those pieces are in place, so we just go seamlessly into it to meet the deadline that we all knew was looming of this August first to get it on to the debt exclusion.
Oh, I'm not suggesting you take your foot off the gas, Mark, at all.
Okay, no, no, then.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, I'd like, if we get, since the June town meeting is going to create this new committee, the moderator then has to appoint it and then they have to, you know, get sworn in. I don't know, maybe that can happen quickly. I don't know. If we can do the handoff quicker, that would be better, but I'm certainly not asking you to stop while that's going on.
No, that's that's fine. It's, this committee was formed in a week.
Oh, I I know. I'm I'm all I'm all on board. This is a way, way, way overdue project that needs to happen, for sure, for sure. And the fact that it can be done on in that location with those amenities, such as replacing the white field house functionality for the locker rooms for football and all of that, and even a better location than the white field house. And the white field house has to go.
Has to go.
My my kids have been in there when they were on teams. They said it's a hellhole in there, so things got to go. So if we can do that and if you open up, I don't know if you put the parking in the front or whatever you do, but the question is whether it lays out like this with the rest of the fields, I, you know, that's a school committee, athletic department, other people have to get involved. But anyway, I like I like where you're going, Ted. As usual, you are bringing your brilliance to Belmont, so thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Well, Ted, thank you for this. It's a lot to take in. The 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 renovate and expand option, I guess, has a couple of advantages. For one, I mean, how much embodied energy is actually salvageable from the existing building, Ted?
So it's actually a calculation that would have to be done, Roy. There is a calculation, a way to do that. But it's primarily the formal structure, the primary structure of the building, the bents, as it were called. And then it's a matter of what other pieces we can pull out and harvest. So masonry, for example, we talked about not moving piece by piece because that's very labor intensive, but cutting panels out and reusing panels as wall cladding as one way, reusing the pearlins as wall cladding. So so there are ways of formally calculating that, and we'd have to get about that that task to to answer your question clearly.
But otherwise, it sounds like everything else in the existing building would go, like the the ice surface and the machinery and all of that.
Well, the ice surface and the machinery has really met its useful life. There is some discussion about trying to reuse the glass, but keeping the boards. That's part of the the discussion that's happening. The the equipment below the, you know, in in the, in below the ice would all need to be changed anyway and updated. It's not entirely clear how the how long that equi- that equipment would last, how long the ice making equipment would last. The, you know, electrical service would all need to be updated. The HVAC system is is questionable at best. There's no sprinkler system. There really needs to be a sprinkler system.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that you you might keep some of the steel and some of the brick and the rest goes.
I I think that's, I think that's right. We we may be able to reuse some of the, some of the, some of the bleacher seating in some really inventive way. I think it's, the idea is to, if the goal is net zero and 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 reaching net zero with this building will be a heavy lift, but reaching net zero as a community in Belmont is a much easier lift because there are ways of doing that across the town, not just in one building. And we've been working with the green engineer on that and that conversation. But trying to grab on to some of the embodied energy and use that in some way, there is some possibility there. The exact calculation is is very difficult to to.
Okay. It also sounds like in any scenario, the white field house really needs to go. Even renovate and expand, I mean, well, it's it's just not really a usable building. And with renovate and expand, it's it's actually unnecessary and in the way. But what's a little bit unclear to me is, I think, as Mark opened up with, where does that leave us with the fields themselves? It sounds like what you've laid out here is something that is separable from the playing fields. The the white field house sounds like would have to be part of this project because, yeah, it has to go in order to proceed with either scenario. But the fields, what's your position or your view on the fields themselves? Are they, can you draw a line and say the construction stops east of the fields and the fields aren't touched, or the fields going to be taken up with this also?
If we.
The the fields, we could draw a construction line limit on either one of the options we have, either Concord Avenue or the rebuild and allow the fields to be continued to be used with, you know, you put up fencing. And then after the the rink is finished, you then attack the fields and figure out what you want to do with them. But we want to try to maximize the discussion we've had with the school committee, so we want to maximize the field space in the future. And the renovate and expand, we need to look at that some more, Ted, is that takes away more of the field than building new on Concord Avenue. Building new on Concord Avenue maximizes the amount of field space you have to use in the future.
Okay, then then it's important to be clear on exactly what field layout you can achieve with the renovate and expand. Can you really fit a a full baseball field on that?
It without, it it overlays on other fields.
Yeah, well, sure. I think that.
Yes.
One field at a time out of the three.
They they all do, they all do, but 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 and and again, this goes to Adam's point about about neighbors and and what the consideration will be about putting the 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 new building on Concord Ave. The closer you are to Concord Ave, the more expanse you have for the fields, right? Because because then then we've got from the back of the bleachers to behind the mobile stations, so there's more room to work with. If if the, if we keep it, you know, renovate and expand, there's there's less room. The geometry of the site is just not as conducive to having the field as it is if it's a long, open space. So I think you're right. It it either option, one needs to consider the fields and lay them out, you know, properly and and in detail to get it to work. A lot of these things are knit together in ways that I don't think were considered when it was just about renovating the building.
Yeah, I mean, I even if the the field work is carried out as a separate project, as I think it actually should be, the to understand the trade off between these two scenarios, the implication of the fields, sounds like it's still a little tricky. My impression of parking is that in front of, with the Concord Avenue plan, there's actually no parking area or minimal parking area off street. Is that right?
That's right. And and that was the plan where we had studied what would be involved if we parked underneath the building. And we, as we started to study the costs, it seemed to be escalating beyond a a recommendable number.
Yeah. Because I I would just say now that I I, based on my experience on the traffic working group at the high school, I I would be prepared to propose to the planning board that the that the current parking requirement actually be reduced. That would be more, make life a little easier with the renovate and expanding. To reduce, to reduce it exactly how much is something to be determined, but I think it could be reduced pretty materially from what the current expectation is.
That's interesting, Roy. Good point.
Forming a town hall if you do that.
Well, I, but I, maybe. I I think the traffic patterns, at least in this first year of the school, have actually been different from what was predicted, and I think it's worth having that discussion over again.
Something something to take into consideration, though. It's an interesting point, though. Yeah, Roy, I'm sorry. I don't know if you're done.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm glad if this group can continue working after town meeting because it sounds like you've you've made a lot of progress, but there's more progress that should be done before handing it off to somebody else potentially. And so I I just hope that we can have an intense couple of weeks between now and August first to sort this out.
We need it.
Mark, the chair of the planning board, has his hand up.
Yeah, so there's two. Ellen, have her hand up first. I'm happy to recognize, admit Steve first, let's do that. But Ellen, as the middle and high school building committee, might have points of view. The one comment, maybe as we add, let's admit the planning board chair first and then we'll ask what Ellen has to say, if someone can bring Steve in. The one point, when you were talking about the expand and renovate, Roy, and you talked about the white field house, is you don't need to, if you if you renovate and expand, which seems to be to be the option to consider seriously. Now I'm thinking about it, we'll have to see what parking impact that is and what field impact that is, right, Mark Healy? Is you don't have to be, you don't have to deconstruct the white field house anytime soon. Or does it need to be part of the construction cost or cost? I mean, you eventually have to deconstruct it, but I mean, I hate to suggest that we sort of leave that old building sitting there, you know, it's rat infested or whatever, it becomes rat infested, but you don't have to deconstruct it.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think I think you'd want to take it down to create the lay down.
You wouldn't? Okay, okay. The lay down area? Okay, got it.
You're not, you're not, you're going to have to take up more of the field space.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you for correcting me. I'm not a.
And it's not, based on the numbers that we got from CHA, which came from the high school building committee, it's not a huge number that has to take it down.
It's so old, you can probably just blow on it and the thing will fall over, but.
The the big unknown is, you know, we need to do it and hazardous materials, how much asbestos is in that building?
Chair Pinkerton.
I just thought I'd weigh in on the parking requirement.
Yeah, please identify yourself.
I'm sorry about that. I apologize. Steve Pinkerton, Chair of the Planning Board. I just wanted to weigh in on the parking requirement. The 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 school building committee is basically withdrawing from everything west of Harris Field. They've come to us with a amendments to their design site plan that that takes them completely out of that equation, so the parking that's there would also come off the table. And so that's a completely renegotiable option here. And it would have to come in from somebody else, whoever is going to be in charge of that site. So they're, again, they're, I hate to use the word, but abdicating their responsibility for what's happening was.
No, I'm I'm not understanding that. Steve, if you don't mind, I don't quite understand it. I thought parking consideration was for on campus parking for the school. That's off the table as well?
Well, there, yes. They're 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 claiming that they don't need parking over there, but that's no longer necessary.
For the school?
For the school.
And so the parking that you just referenced, is that just for the rink parking?
There there isn't any, there isn't anything before us to consider in terms of approving parking anymore. The the, we 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 reviewed the design site plan review for a high school that included property west of Harris Field. That's no longer part of the.
But you're going to do site plan review, you and I've talked about this briefly. Planning board will need to be involved in site plan review through, you know, July, maybe September, October, on the new rink.
On the new rink, and that will be a separate application that would come to us.
And.
That's all I'm, that's the.
There would have to be parking consideration on that presumably, right?
Correct. And so we would be looking at that for its its viability. And and that could, depending on how much of of the school activities are included in that new plan, in other words, site plans for the the fields, for example, or for additional parking at the high school, which may need to be addressed in this new plan, but it's 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 an entirely new ballgame.
All right. Well, why, can you just stay with us, Steve? Stay, keep Steve in. Can we admit Ellen? I think she might have some points of view from the middle and high school building committee. Ellen Schreiber. Hey, Ellen.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ellen.
Awesome. Yeah, I wasn't coming in so much from the high school building committee. I mean, I'm happy to weigh in there if you have a question, but I was, Mark, listening earlier when you were talking about timeline. And you were sort of projecting, you know, the fact that you're going to have to vote sometime mid to late July, but there will still be design development happening. And it was suggested that, you know, as long as we had the number sometime in October, voters would know before they voted. But that's really not enough time to communicate with voters. So, you know, whatever number you have, probably about the time you vote, or maybe early August, is the number that would need to go to the voters, because otherwise there's really not time for the communications to happen.
Oh, that's a great point. But it didn't seem to me that we'd be in that kind of a position, Ted and Mark. To have any sort of, you know, I guess it's schematic design, does that, does that generate some? And I think you've already done supplementary cost estimates, Mark, right? Mark and Ted, but would you be able to refine those?
I think we can meet that. I I think we can meet that, but Ellen, I I I contend that the town of Belmont pretty much goes sleepy until Labor Day.
Agree, but there is a communication that needs to happen in order to, that that needs time to prepare in order to be able to communicate the numbers to the voters.
September time, September, early September timeframe latest, right? End of August, early September.
I would say August latest. There's a lot of work to do to to get the month, to get the information out.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Ellen. Ellen, can I, not to lean on you as a member of the middle and high school building committee, but can I ask, because I think I've heard you say this and said this at the the ring financing committee, that meeting we had. The middle and high school building committee had always, and I think Tom said this as well, Tom Caputo, a deconstruction of the white field house was always within its purview. Is that still the case?
No, it's not. It was always part of the purview. We were always going to do everything west of Harris Field except for the rink. That changed. We went, as Steve said, we went to the planning board the other night describing some of the changes that we're making. One of the changes that relates to parking is based on the experience that the school department has had this year with the school and and students parking and how it's working out. And what the superintendent said at the planning board meeting is that the students who are parking on Concord Ave all along Concord Ave and in the jug handle that's opposite the pool, that that combination of parking is meeting the needs for the students. And and in part, this is because many more students are biking and walking than they were before. So the need for, from. So the need for, from the school department's opinion, the need for additional park, you know, onsite parking for school operation just isn't there like we originally thought it would be. So the proposal that the high school building committee was discussing with the planning board was not doing that parking as part of the high school project. In addition, we are, the proposal is also, we're going to leave the fields west of Harris Field as they are. They are currently serving most of the needs of the school. You know, right now, it's, it's softball, soccer, and the various track field events. The only thing that we don't have that was in the new plan was to have an overlapping baseball field. So, so the, the current intention of the high school building committee is to leave everything west of Harris Field as it is. And we would not be building any parking because the high school project doesn't need it as we had originally expected we needed. So any parking that would be needed for the rink, we're not building. And so that would, as Steve said earlier, that would be a consideration of, you know, whatever that project would ask for. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So the deconstruction of White Field House would be within the cost of this new expand in whatever rink we decide on, Mark and Ted.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman.
But that's it, but that's where it stops. I mean, at that point. And then I think that temporary building committee, when it is formed, hopefully will be approved by town meeting. We'll have to decide fairly quickly, I would think, what option that we're proceeding with, correct?
That would be good, because then the schematic design can be very focused.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with that.
All right. Thank you both. Steve, anything further? We all set?
I'll, I'll see you later. I'll be around. I guess we're about an hour and change.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I know. Apologize. And we just got caught up. A lot of important presentations. I knew it was gonna be a late night, so. Okay, well, thank you. I think if no further questions from my colleagues, we don't need to do anything other than thank you for the report out. And continued great work, Mark, and your leadership of the, of the primary redesign committee. And I want to thank all the members that seem to be participating tonight. Probably checking the score of the Celtics game while they're, while they're zooming in. Continue to work here. And I know you're meeting, you may have already met this week, or maybe you're meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning at seven thirty. Do you need me to stay to, to the next item?
Yeah, please stay for the next item. So Ted, and thank you very much, Ted. Appreciate the great work that you've done. I don't know whether we need Ted on the next item. Perhaps Ted wants to stay on that because it's a contract renewal, right? And if we have any questions for Ted on the next one, Mark, then maybe you need to Okay, thank you, Ted. We appreciate the innovation that you bring to the table here. And clearly you did it with the police station, and you're doing it again with the rink. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time of the month.
All right. So we have, it was supposed to be eight twenty five, it's now nine thirty. Eight twenty, excuse me, discussion of possible vote to approve the contract for designer services awarded to the Galante Galante Architectural Studios of Cambridge, Mass. in the amount of one hundred thirty nine thousand, seven seventy five. So, Mark, is this just a continuation or an additional contract?
This is the original contract, Mr. Chairman.
We never, we never approved it?
We approved the engaging them, but we didn't have a contract to do. So this is, this is that contract. It's, and we've gone back, I've gone back and forth with Ted a couple of times to get it to the number we want. But this is well within the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget.
Okay, that's great. And presumably, Patrice, I was gonna ask a question. On these contracts, which are, look, I'm not an attorney, and Adam is, and he looks at it in that way. We do have legal counsel. Look at these, because all of these articles and provisions, I mean, is that vet it?
We do not have counsel. Look at this.
So, so, Patrice, I talked to the town council or the assistant town council on this and asked for that. That is, in fact, one of the recommendations I would make, Patrice, is we ought to have somewhat of a standard contract to engage architects or owners, project managers. I had a hard time finding a contract that had been approved by town council.
Yeah, this actually, this issue actually came up, I believe, at the beginning of the middle and high school building project a couple of years ago, looking for the same type of boilerplate type of documents. So, yeah, it definitely would be useful.
Mark, can I, can I ask you about this particular contract? And it sounds like Ted hasn't been paid yet, so I hope he gets paid.
He only has one invoice in today.
From reading this contract, it wasn't clear to me, A, what the end date was. I was originally thinking that this engagement would stop with town meeting, but it sounds like it actually can continue past that?
Yeah, the, the, the new building committee would decide whether or not to engage Galante Studios to continue on with his services, where you would have another contract to get you through contract documents and probably construction.
So this, with this contract for the hundred and thirty nine thousand.
Gets us through the preliminary feasibility study. That's it.
But, but, but does that mean that, that takes us into June, or does it take us past June?
We, we, we always set a date like around June 1st, but he's willing to continue on until he goes to the next stage.
For the, without, without additional payment, or?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. And what, and it also wasn't clear to me exactly what the work product would be from this contract.
It's, it's just a feasibility study similar to what you saw today with, which will also have a cost estimate to goes along with it for the two schemes we now whittle ourselves down to.
Okay.
Okay.
Services is Exhibit A, but Exhibit A is blank. I think we need counsel.
Exhibit A is blank, Adam?
Yeah, at least on the version I have. I think we ought to have counsel review it.
No, the, the other, Adam, that scope of work is important, and I discussed that at the select in, with people in your office, Patrice, because you cannot get any money from the state until the scope of work has been submitted to the state and they'll give you the fifty percent back to start funding this study. So they had a scope of work, maybe it just didn't get copied in your, but there is a scope of work.
A is blank, yeah.
The proposal is attached as exhibit, under Exhibit D, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, he has, he has a, he had a proposal in there. What was it? What? Anyway, we'll go back and look at it again.
I'm just, I think this, and counsel should look at it. I'd feel more comfortable. I mean, it's forty one pages. I don't want to
Yeah, we, we can, we can, Mark, we can approve this next Wednesday in our pre, pre ATM meeting. So we'll, we'll, we'll be prepared to do it then. Once Ted to get paid. But, but what this is, is that we as a select board, you can't, as a preliminary design committee, you can't engage anyone. So we are engaging him to do this feasibility work with, with, you know, with, with cost estimates. And then the temporary building, temporary building committee does have the authority to engage architects. So they'll have to then we'll be out, the select board will then be out of that sort of relationship. And the new temporary building committee will then have to engage, you know, if they want to continue with Ted Galante, which I'm assuming they will. Him under a separate contract, correct?
Correct. And, and that's why I came to you in late March, Mr. Chairman, and asked for your approval to engage Galante.
Yeah, and we, and we approved it.
And you approved that.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we'll, 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 we'll approve and authorize Patrice to sign this contract by next Wednesday. That's okay.
That's fine.
So we need town council to review it, plus we need to schedule Appendix A to be filled in, I guess.
Okay. And, and Patrice, if there's questions from town council, he can certainly contact me direct.
Yeah, sounds good.
I don't understand a contract, if there is such a thing in the construction arena, Mark, makes a bunch of sense to me.
Normally, Mr. Chairman, you use the, there's an A I A standard contract form that you engage architects under. And I'm surprised the town did not use that.
What's it called, Adam? A I?
I gotta say, I don't like it as a template, but it exists.
It does exist.
Well, maybe we could
I think it's poorly and confusingly done. There, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. I think counsel, look at this, we'll sort it out.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have this on our agenda for the, Mark, I hate to sort of lean on you again, but come back for that meeting next Wednesday. That'd be great.
Okay.
And we'll do it right at the top of the meeting. So just to sort of, okay? Is that cool?
No problem.
Mark, great work. Thank you. I mean, I know you've been spending long hours on this. We appreciate you engaging on it and Doug. Your great things about your leadership and the meetings that you conduct. So thank you again on behalf of select board for all your efforts.
Let, let's get you back on schedule. Good night.
Take care. All right. So the next agenda topic, possible vote and select board positions for Warner articles. I think we voted on most, which is the ones that we didn't vote on.
We can do the rink now.
Let's do the rink. Is that, I have the revised motions in front of us. So Article eight. That's been filled in. That's been revised. We got that from the town clerk, right?
No, we, we, we still need to meet on this.
So this is not ready for our vote?
No, we have a meeting on June 1st in the, during the day, meeting with council and some key stakeholders.
All right, really? Okay, interesting.
I mean, I, I think it, it's going to stay relatively similar to what's there now. It's just we need to make sure.
So, so when, when is this being taken up at Tummy?
This is being taken up.
You'll be meeting in advance of that?
It's the later nights. It's either night three or four, I believe.
But, Patrice, the, the way this is written now, I have to say, I don't really understand it. It says design and construction of a new public skating rink, that, that's clear. But then to consider design and construction related to the land, I, I would like to carve the fields out of this building committee.
So I think that was the purpose of the meeting, which is, again, it's on June 1st, and we're gonna look at this motion with, with counsel to, to finalize it.
You're meaning, I think I'm part of that meeting, maybe.
Yeah, it's nine thirty on June 1st.
Okay, all right. So the other one that we haven't voted on was Article thirteen. And we've gotten a revised resolution. And perhaps, Adam and Roy, you've heard this as well, but I think what I heard from Mike Widmer is that Bill Abalo looked at this and was comfortable with it, so. Seems to be
The petition is here, Mark, if you wanted to.
Oh, yeah. So let's admit, Brian. Hey, Brian. Let's bring Brian in.
Hello, thank you.
You're welcome, Brian. So this is a revised is this a revised motion or something that you?
Yes, it is. So the original motion included
Please identify yourself, Brian. I'm sorry.
Brian Eiler, School Street, Belmont, Mass. So the original
Are you a town meeting member, Brian?
No, I am not.
Okay, okay. Please, please continue. Yes, go ahead.
So the, the original included conditional, conditions regarding use of the ARBA funds. So we removed all that. Because that just complicated things for a host of reasons. And so, so what we have left is basically an acknowledgement that the building committee is committed to putting solar on the roof, but also that there may be challenges in the future. So what this basically does is give the building committee the endorsement of town meeting. An unequivocal endorsement from town meeting saying that this is a priority and it needs to go on the roof. So we're hoping that that will make it easier for, in the face of future financial challenges that the, the committee may, may confront for them to be able to keep this top priority.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm fine with it. I mean, it seems like the building committee was fine with it, so.
Yeah, I just wondered if we even needed this. This is non-binding, though, correct?
Correct.
That's right.
Because it says to the, directs them to the extent, maximum extent allowed by law, which is like, no, none extent. So I'm, I'm, I mean, town meeting has no ability to direct this building committee to do anything. I would say maybe a town meeting, you know, expresses its desire to the building committee or something like that. But there is, they can't direct. I don't have a problem with town meeting, you know, saying that.
Just could we, whoops, can you hear me? Am I?
Yeah, we can hear you. No, we can hear you.
Could you just back up, scroll up just a little bit? To see the title of the article? Yeah, resolution require, requiring, so this, this resolution is not requiring anything, is it?
No, we can't.
It's recommending or something, but I don't think that has there's no power to require here.
Right. And, and so, again, what it does is it provides the, the building committee an unequivocal statement from town meeting, right, saying that the town meeting feels that this is an extremely important element.
No, I, I get that. It's just as a title, I, I think it would make, it would be more consistent to say, with, with the power of town meeting, to say resolution endorsing, perhaps, but not requiring seems like the wrong word.
And to the, and to the, to that point, what I was saying at the bottom, where it says to the maximum extent allowed by law, it should probably say town meeting hereby recommends or desires that, that they do it as follows. I think if you, if you mess with those words and they made it what it legally is, I think this would be easy. I mean, the concept, no one's disagreeing with. And town meeting wants to vote it, I think that only helps. But I think
Patrice, does, does the bylaw review committee have any opinion on form and placement for something that's not a bylaw?
No.
No, I don't remember so. But I mean, I, there was a question about, I think, the binding authority of this. So, I mean, I can run it down with George tomorrow if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Sounds like we have questions about this, Brian. Sorry. I think the intent is, is noble, and we agree with it. And I think the building committee has already voted to put P V panels on the, on the, on the middle and high school building, building. But, yeah, I think my colleagues raised good points, require, can't require them to do anything and and you can't direct them to do anything either.
Yeah, that's why I was confused. That's why I asked whether it was non-binding, because I thought it was. And then I read it, and I'm like, well, it doesn't sound non-binding to me. So I just think we just need to sort that out.
Sure.
Right. All right, Brian. So do we have time to do that? When is thirteen being taken up?
I think it's, looks like later on.
Yeah. So Brian, is, is Brian still having abilities there, if he so desires to sort of change the wording?
I believe so, but I'll double check tomorrow.
Okay, I will await instructions.
Look, I think the intent is, is, is no, and we, we agree with the need, we, we support the need. We're glad the building committee voted for it. I'm speaking for myself. I think my colleagues agree as well. Clearly, that was the commitment that was made to the community. We need to follow through with that. And I know the building committee wants to do that as well. I think it's just the language that's in it that, that's creating some uncomfortable feelings.
No, I think I agree with you entirely, Mark. I just want to make sure it's legally correct as written.
Agreed, yeah. All right. So we'll defer on thirteen. Thank you, Brian.
All righty, thank you.
Have a good night. Appreciate you waiting up.
We are taking up Mr. Chair of the capital budget the first night, and that's Article twenty. We do need, are we ready to?
Emery Mahoney is not here tonight. And so what I understand is that we're gonna do this on the first?
That's right. We reached out to Emery. She unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. She really wants to be here to answer any questions before you vote.
All right. So we're deferring on twenty, and nineteen's motion's been revised based on our vote Monday. So are we voting on this tonight, gentlemen?
Sounds like we're voting on nothing tonight.
Well, why won't we vote on the Article nineteen?
Can we take a look at nineteen again, please?
Nineteen is the fuel tanks.
Yeah, we, we voted.
Oh, I'm, I'm a bit problematic with that.
No, that's what we voted. So presumably
Patrice, the warrant committee voted it tonight?
Yep, they voted in favorable, favorable action, ten yes, one abstention, one no.
Okay, interesting. It's good to hear.
Right. I, I move favorable action on Article nineteen, the fuel tanks.
If I have a second?
Didn't we vote on this the other night?
No, we still have to take a motion on the article. We have to take a vote, favorable action on the article. We voted to construct the article. We didn't vote to
Yeah, we didn't recommend the article.
Did you second that?
I seconded, yes.
All in favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye with the understanding that I do not consider this to be in the best interest of Belmont.
All right, thank you for that. Mark Low Eye. So three to zero. Favorable, and I think that's it, right?
Well, the last budget motion, but I'd wait to the capital.
Twenty, twenty two, you said we had to wait on as well. So we have
No, twenty two is, we, we could vote. It's just, it's whether or not you want to do capital and then vote the budget. So there's, there's a change.
First, and then that one. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just briefly, Article twenty two, we had a change. I had sent a memo out to accompanying the, the change to the town meeting reps. Ellen sent it out a couple of days ago. the, the change to the town meeting reps. Alan sent it out a couple of days ago. Um, the principal debt and interest, uh, that number went up by one point two million dollars. The reason for that. Wait, just let me, uh, the reason for that is when, uh, Floyd, the, the town treasurer provided his principal debt and interest expenses for FY twenty-three, um, the third borrowing of the high school was not included. Uh, we just went out to borrow for that. Floyd will be in front of the board on June first. Um, asking the board to, asking you to sign off on those, um, issuances. Um, so we had to in, input that, uh, principal and debt interest, which will hit on in FY twenty-three to the budget. So it raises the levy, it raises the expense, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's money in, money out. Um, but we did have to reflect that change. Uh, good news with that borrowing is we, we did maintain our AAA bond rating. Uh, we just had to adjust the, uh, the budget to reflect the borrowing.
So the interest in, the debt and interest increases by the one point, what is it? One point?
One point two, one point two nine.
But with the debt exclusion, right? So that just increases the revenue side.
Yes.
So there's no, okay, got it. So that, that just needed to be included here. And that's a fiscal twenty-three expenditure?
Yes.
So we have three articles. Eight were, so we'll be ready on eight, we won't be ready the next Wednesday, right?
We will be, if we meet June first and we have a final motion, if the board has time.
Yeah, so we have A thirteen, twenty, capital budget. If, you know, I'm assuming Emery can attend that meeting hopefully.
Yep, she can.
And then, uh, twenty-two.
Correct.
All right, cool. All right, thank you. And oh, thirteen, I'm sorry, yeah.
And then any amendments too that come up? I don't know with any amendments.
Yeah, there may be some amendments, right. Great, okay, um. You want to do the charge here?
Let's just move it along. It's getting really late.
Yeah, it's getting late. I'm sorry, Adam. We had a lot to cover tonight.
I got nothing else to do.
No, I know. Uh, can we, uh, we, Steve, you're with us, so has this been finalized?
Uh, to my mind, it has.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one question, though. Um, it says a member of DEI, equity and inclusion should be the implementer. What's the name of DEIIC or whatever the right name of the committee is?
Well, you disbanded the, you disbanded that committee and then now we're gonna have an implementation committee.
DEIIC, which I assume is what this should be.
Oh, that's right.
So the question, I think the question to the board is if you want to take from the committee, or do we want to put it out to someone that might be an advocate and, and want to represent?
Well, whatever, then the wording, this needs to be, I don't know, different. It's either diversity, equity, inclusion, implementation committee, or it's.
A resident.
Unit resident, uh, you know, a resident, I guess resident, we would pick somebody.
That, that would be, that would be great. And there are a couple of residents I can think of who would fill that bill nicely, so.
Yeah.
Oh, resident.
So one, yeah, I think it needs to change to say one resident, um, that what? That represents, um.
Representing the diversity, equity and inclusion community. I don't know how you word that properly. I don't want to be offensive. I want to make sure.
Well, let's, let's establish it tonight, so let's decide. One resident, we could say as amend it, right? One resident, um, that represents a diversity, equity, inclusion community.
Very good. I, I like that.
They can always.
And that could be a member of the new, uh, the new group, or it could.
Yeah, it could be, right, exactly. So is it?
It could be Bill and Human Rights Commission Belmont against faces.
Yeah, exactly. Seven, seven members, right? I think two members of the planning board. I saw some red lines in this. Um, anything else, Adam?
I just wanted to know if the old diverse, if the old committee had seen this at all, or anyone.
I have, um, spoken to Kim about it. We, we have a flyer that we'll be sending to Kim and yes, I, I've had conversations.
I, I mean, there, she's okay with the charge. I, I don't have any particular, same's fine with me.
The only issue I have is, we say it's a length of one term. It's May twenty-fifth and you need to present, um, a final report by the end of the year. I mean, is that enough time?
Well, if it, i- it, it may not be, and we may have to extend that, but the concern here is that if we don't get something out from the recommendations from this committee out, uh, soon, um, w- we're gonna be behind the eight ball in terms of complying, um, uh, with, uh, a vote of town meeting.
We need to wrap this up, yeah.
We need, we do, we do need to get this going.
Yeah, all right, so, so we can leave it as is with the, with the reporting aspect of it and, but it's a one-year committee that will be formed, I guess, tonight, right? I mean, we're.
That's, that's the idea.
One, one year from today, that if we need additional time to do the report, I guess this board can always amend the charge, right?
Right, yeah. We can amend the charge.
All right, all right, gentlemen, I have a motion to approve this.
Move to approve the charge for the MBTA Communities Advisory Committee as amended.
Uh, second, but Steve, could I ask you a question just to, to be clear what we're getting into? It has, it has to be a zoning district of at least fifty acres?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself earlier. Steve Pinkerton, Chair of Planning Board.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, it has to be at fifty acres, uh, total, the, with at least one district that's seventy, that's twenty-five acres. So that the, the, the contiguous size of twenty-five acres is the, 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 the big nut to crack. And then the rest of it can be, uh, spread out across town.
Okay, so there needs to be at least one sector of twenty-five acres plus twenty-five acres someplace around.
Exactly, um, exactly. And by the way, that, that could change. This is a, this is a little bit of a moving target. Um, uh, their, their, their final rule is gonna be promulgated in the summer. So, uh, the committee's charge would include, uh, embracing those and understanding what the consequences are.
The wording is flexible enough to establish one or more as a right zoning district.
Okay, but just, Steve, just to be clear then, what, what this is. Cause I thought the, the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago was that the density has to be at least fifteen units per acre. But in order to get twenty-one hundred seventy-six units on fifty acres, the density would actually have to be more like, you know, forty-five.
Right, that's correct.
Forty-five, okay.
So, uh, we're just proving the charge, right?
I understand.
That's right, we're not, we're not debating the issue here.
Not debating, just to be, just to be clear on what their, their, their task is, okay.
Yeah, right, great, thank you.
And part of that task is to, to really fully, as it, as it says here, fully understand what the consequences are and what, 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 what needs to be done. Um, I'm not suggesting, by the way, that we're, uh, we're going to consider not complying. We just need to understand what the consequences of non-compliance are so that we have an answer to that question when it comes up.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Steve. My motion is second on favor.
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Proye, all right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll get to work right away.
All right, so we have another charge for, um, another very important committee, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Implementation Committee. I was fine with this. Gentlemen, do you have any comments?
Uh, honestly, Mark, I didn't understand the first sentence of the.
Okay.
Uh, objectives. It says we'll discuss and determine implementation. I thought the select board would determine implementation.
Where does it say that? Diversity Equity.
The first sentence of the objective.
Is established by the select board as a committee to advise the select board, advise the select board as to how to implement the final recommendations.
Yeah, but then look at the first sentence of the objective.
Committee will discuss and determine implementation on the final recommendations.
You're saying discuss and recommend implementation.
I, I think that would be more appropriate.
Because otherwise you're right.
Discussion what?
Discuss and recommend implementation.
Okay, I'm fine with that change.
Because otherwise it's internally inconsistent, you're right.
Discuss and recommend implementation on the final recommendations. Now that, that, no, that doesn't. The committee will discuss and advise.
Or advise on the final, well, something, but something other than what's here now.
No, yeah. Not recommend the recommendations. I mean, that sounds, that doesn't sound right. Um, committee will discuss.
And advise on implementation.
On implementation. The committee will discuss and advise.
On imple- on implementation of the final recommendations.
Yeah, there you go. That's it. Yep.
All right, that's better.
I move approval of the, um, charge for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Implementation Committee as amended.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Low Eye. Great. Good luck on that, and I guess it's committee that we're posting for participation, right, Patrice?
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Discussion possible vote? I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have something?
No, I said that, that was right.
Thank you. Discussion possible votes accept donations at behalf of the Rec Department for T-ball team sponsorships in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars. Is Brandon here?
He should be.
Yeah. Oh, you know what? And Rachel Heller had her hand up, so, um, I'm sorry, Rachel. Uh, why don't we admit, Rachel? Did you have a comment on the Diversity Task Force Implementation Committee, Rachel? I'm not paying attention.
Yes, I did.
What is it? What is it?
Um, well, very quickly, I'll just applaud.
Identify yourself, Rachel.
Hi, uh, Rachel Heller, co-chair of the Housing Trust and Town Meeting Member for Precinct Three. Um, first, I just wanted to applaud the Steve and the planning board for the approach of having a cross-committee uh, task force here or advisory committee, because clearly zoning and multifamily zoning hit housing, hit diversity, hit economic development. Um, and so it's, I, I think the approach is right. Um, and so I, I'm thankful for that. I do want to point out a couple of things. Um, if we're assessing non-compliance, I know that Steve said the goal was to put this into effect, and that's important. We should also make sure that this committee looks at the benefits of doing so. And then the other, um, comment is about diversity, equity and inclusion. I think it's really important to have the committee, uh, the new implementation committee appoint somebody. We, um, they, they had a very thoughtful report that they put out from the Diversity Task Force. And we should really rely on that committee to appoint somebody, um, on the committee's behalf. We wouldn't just say the Housing Trust or a resident who wants housing or needs housing or has feelings about housing. Um, I think it's really important that, that be entrusted to the committee to make that appointment. And that's, I'll wrap that up, but I, I thank you for, for approving this too, because I think it's really.
So that's not here at all.
That was in what, the discussion that you all just had about, um, should it be somebody who represents diversity, equity and inclusion? Or should it be the diversity equity?
On the MBT, on the MBTA one, right?
Yes.
Not, okay.
So I think it's important that's the committee who's, the task force has already put a lot of thought into housing.
So we said one resident of the, of that, that represents the diversity, equity and inclusion community. But what you're telling, what you're saying to us, I'm not sure we have to change the charge, is that we believe the diversity implementation, diversity equity and inclusion implementation committee should appoint someone?
Yes, it could either be from their own committee or someone that they would, their designee, I think, was the, was the word that could have been, um, put in there.
And, and that's fine. I think that's, that's a good comment, but it would seem to me that we're not, we're not gonna do this in a vacuum, right? So we would certainly take, Patrice, it seems to me that we would take either someone from the implementation committee or, uh, someone that they might recommend for, for.
Yeah, I mean, the, the charge, I, I had sent the, the charge to the Chair of the Diversity Task Force. She had sent it out to others for, that served on that task for, for input, so, um.
I like the flexibility of what we voted. We can have someone from the committee.
Rachel noted, I mean, I agree with you. I think it's, like, I mean, clearly, we wouldn't do this in a vacuum. We would look for recommendations from the implementation committee or in terms of someone on that committee or someone, you know, outside of that committee.
I appreciate that. I think the difference is, um, the other committees are being entrusted to make an appointment. But the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Implementation Committee, their recommendation in this context would be considered. Um, their input would be considered, but it sounds like the way it was drafted, you would be making the final decision on that rather than someone who they are recommending as the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Implementation Committee.
We'd have to vote on them, whether they appoint, whether they appoint the person or not, whether they recommend someone.
It's always a select board appointment.
Okay, the, the phrasing was, um, was interesting in that if I look at over one member of the Housing Trust.
No, we know, I understand the point. You, you understand your point.
The other was my original comment was, was did we want to make it the DEIIC or not? But, um, I don't have a problem.
Which I was fine with, you know, one member of the. And then we just ended up at a resident, and Steve was with us. So we can go back and revise. I don't really, you know, for me, that, that I'm fine, because it would seem to me that we probably have someone from that committee anyway that would join this.
My guess is that's who we would appoint, but, um, you know, if you want to, Mr. Chair, go back and revisit it. Now we can wrap it up.
Yeah, let's just go back and revisit it.
All right, I move to, um.
Thank you.
I move to reconsider the, uh, vote on the charge for the MBTA Communities Advisory Committee.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Low Eye.
Uh, I move that we amend the charge for the MBTA Communities Advisor Committee for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion uh, member to be a member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Implementation Committee, or the designee, or whatever.
Hold on, Mark, is, does Steve Pinkerton have his hand up again?
No.
No, okay.
Uh, and he just had, no, he.
Oh wait, no, his hand, his hand is back.
Let's bring Steve back in. I mean, this is not a, this is fine. Go ahead, Steve. I mean, this is semantics. I mean, it would be someone from that committee anyway, but I agree with the change. Steve, can we let Steve back in?
I'll just let him talk here, hold on.
Steven. Sorry, but.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to, to jump in on this. I just, um, the intention here was that it would be somebody that would be appointed to the committee all along. Um, it was suggested that it be a resident, and that could be a resident, but I, I had always expected that the, the committee would be making the appointment. So there's absolutely, this is, it is just semantics at this point.
Yeah, so you're fine with this change then, presumably?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, uh, so I had a motion, motion from Adam. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Low Eye. Thank you, Rachel. I'll be more attentive to who has their hands up and. Have a good night. All right, so we have, uh, Brandon Fitz. Hey, Brandon. Got a bunch of money. We had T-ball sponsorships. That's pretty cool. You want to just briefly talk about this?
Absolutely. Um, thank you guys for having me, Brandon Fitz, Acting Director of Recreation. My computer's giving me a bit of a hard time with the video. Um, but we have, um, our recreation T-ball league that takes place every year. And this year, we have a number of local businesses and organizations that donated money to sponsor teams. This money goes towards t-shirts, hats and some equipment supplies needed to run the program. Um, the, the sponsoring businesses are, um, there are seven of them. Uh, Buano Pest Control and Fieldy Homes, The Lions Club, The Toy Shop of Belmont, Stone Hearth, A Chocolate Dream and Champion Sporting Goods. Um, their generous contributions went towards making a successful T-ball season happen. And I'm hoping that you all would accept those as donations, um, this evening, so we can run the program.
All right, I, I move that we accept the donations, the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars on behalf of the Recreation Department for T-ball sponsorships.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Proye, and thanks to all those organizations you just, uh, listed, Brandon, and have a good night. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you guys as well.
All right, we have, um, three. You like parties up at Belmont Hill School, huh?
That's the time of year.
Yeah, we have. Possible votes approved following one-day liquor license request. Gentlemen, do I have motions on these?
I have two motions. One, move to approve the request for one-day liquor license, all alcohol from Belmont Hill School for Retirement Party at the Alumni House on Thursday, June second, twenty twenty-two to five, from five to eight P M.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Low Eye.
The other is move to approve two requests for one-day liquor license, all alcohol from Belmont Hill School for Wednesday, June first, twenty twenty-two for a retirement party from five to eight P M, and Wednesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-two, for an end-of-year faculty slash staff celebration from five to nine P M, with these June first and June eighth approvals being conditional pending inspection of the tent by the Belmont Fire Department.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein Eye.
Mark Low Eye. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, any lies on reports?
My capital budget meets tomorrow morning, so.
Okay, good luck on that. Roy, anything?
No, the, uh, light department, uh, sorry, the new light board met yesterday, and I would say that, uh, the meeting considered a range of issues regarding cost of service. Installation of electric chargers, review of financials and so forth. It took over two hours, and I think was a very good demonstration of why it was a good idea to create a separate light board in first place.
I'm just looking at you, sorry.
Despite the structural change impact groups, um, recommendation to consolidate, uh, groups in town and not have so many.
I knew you were gonna bring that up, I know it.
There are some scale this economies they maybe didn't consider.
We've, yeah, we've long decided on that, so thank you, Roy, um, for that report out.
We have two minutes.
Yeah, let's do minutes.
Um, Roy and I have amendments to, uh, May third, which looked fine to me, and then the fourth, we're both okay as it was.
Yeah, same here. So they have a motion for approval here.
The move approval of the May third, twenty twenty-two regular minutes is amended, the May fourth, twenty twenty-two pre ATM meeting minutes, and the May fourth. and the May fourth, twenty twenty-two executive session minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein, I.
Mark Proye. We will now be going into executive session, uh, just to preview, if anyone's still with us here, not very many. Uh, we have several meetings planned. June first, June sixth, June eighth, June thirteenth at five thirty P M, all pre ATM indoor town meeting meetings. Um, town meeting will begin at six thirty and anticipated will last those four nights. And then we have a full meeting at the end of June, June twenty-seventh at seven P M. And so, um, we'll continue our discussion on warrant articles on Wednesday evening of next week. So we have two, uh, matters to consider in executive session. Just one?
Just one. We, we didn't need B. We didn't need A. We need B.
Okay, so we have an executive session, so A will not be meeting on the union matter. Uh, so we have an executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. But the Chair declares, which I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public. Why do I have a motion to go into executive session for stated purpose?
Some of them.
Second.
On favor?
Adam Dash Eye.
Roy Epstein, I.
Mark Proye. Uh, thank you all. We'll see you on the other side.
Momentarily, okay.
Other side.